Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, July 8th. Time is 9:32 a.m. and we're going to start the meeting. Um, Jamie, if you can do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Malika.
Here.
Commissioner Henson.
Here.
Commissioner O'Duratio.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here. Everyone can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I just need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
The motion passes five to zero. Next item on our agenda, we don't have any awards and presentations this morning. Uh, Jamie, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. We have some for, um, land use as well.
For the land use cases?
And I think in general as well.
Okay, so for those that are here for a land use case, we'll call on you here in just a moment when we get to that part of the agenda. Um, is there anyone in the audience that is not here for land use that would like to come down to the podium? Under public comment? So if you're not here for Maker Boyer. Let's see, the titles are. I'm gonna probably mess up this name, Tatchack and Fine Silver, E 64th Avenue Vacation. We'll get to that land use hearing in just a moment. Um, if you're here for Maker Boyer's rezoning and preliminary development plan, we'll also get to you in just a moment. Is there anyone else that would like? To talk under public comment at this time? Come on, yeah, come on up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Greg Kaler, 3712 West 103rd Avenue in Westminster, Colorado. Okay, um, I'm here representative for the Adams County Aging Network, A-CAN. I'm also Adams County representative for Dr. Cog, Denver Regional Council of Governments, along with Bonnie Ashton, a member of the A-CAN. We're here just to introduce ourselves to the committee here. We meet the first Wednesday of every month, nine o'clock at the Thornton Community Centers. Community Connections Building, A-CAN brings together nonprofit organizations, businesses, and government agencies. To develop creative solutions and improve the lives of older adults. At those monthly meetings, we strive to provide and supply those in the community with helpful information and knowledge that may be beneficial. To and vital to making decisions for elderly people. We also provide what we call Senior Resource Fairs. Up to two times a year for seniors to meet with the nonprofit organizations, businesses, and government agencies. Our last fair was held at the Adams County Human Resource Building, which was a great success and. We had over fifty exhibitors and hundred and twenty community members present at that event. Bonnie and myself have lived in the District Three for over sixty years for Adams County residents. We both feel and want to support the aging population in Adams County. A-CAN is a way that we feel we can help our aging citizens in Adams County. Just a few facts here. By the Colorado State Demographic Office, the median age is nearly forty years old. They're forecasting. Uh, let's see, that over fifty percent of the state's growth between 2023 expected to be people over sixty-five years old. The population age over sixty-five will grow thirty-six percent between 2020 and 2030. Nearly adding three hundred and seventeen thousand older adults. Seventy percent of the growth of sixty-five plus population will be over seventy-five years old. In 2023, the population of over sixty-five, or sixteen percent of the population. They project by 2050, it's going to be over twenty percent. The reasons for the aging is the baby boomers, Bonnie and I, are aging in place. We just want to keep in a good area where we're living now and a lot of people are not moving anymore. So that's why we like it here. Impacts are the elder care for elder care and healthcare for services. It's going to affect the seniors people over sixty-five greatly as it's coming forward. We would like to invite all invite all of you to attend our meetings. Kathy Henson has been a long time attendee for our meetings and thank you Kathy for that. We know you're all busy, but you're able to come and learn and see firsthand how we at A-CAN helps and gives information to our aging population. This may help you when you make those very hard decisions at as county commissioners. We have, which affect our aging citizens. In 2023, the Adams County population was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand people. In 2030, twenty percent of that they're saying will be seniors. That's one hundred and seven thousand seniors in Adams County. That's a large amount here. Please don't forget the aging citizens of Adams County as you work to represent all the citizens of the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I do have a follow-up question. Normally this is just public comment. I did catch the first Wednesday of the month. Did you say a time?
It's at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for being here.
And I do have some brochures and cards if you want them later on also.
Yeah.
Can I give it to somebody?
To our county attorney there in the coral suit jacket.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, is there anyone else in the room that would like to talk under public comment? Not seeing anybody. So we'll move on to elected official communication. Commissioners? Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First, hello Greg and Bonnie. It's so great to see you. I didn't know you were coming today. Uh, yes, I have been attending A-CAN meetings for about two years and I've learned a lot. Uh, the data you shared is very relevant, obviously, and we've heard it in other settings, meetings that we attend as commissioners, but it's. Something we have to keep in mind is that our population is aging and the, and the, uh, and that's going to change the services needed by our residents here in Adams County. Yes, your resource fairs are wonderful. I've also attended several of those and I know, uh, so there's a lot of interest out there. Not only among seniors, but among their family members to learn about what resources are available for aging in place. And navigating all the, you know, the changes that are necessary with, um, as, as we all get older. So thank you. It's great to see you. I finally got to see you last week for the first time in a couple of months. So hopefully we'll do that more frequently. But also I know we've had conversations in the past, um, you know, our, our county health department is what, two? Years old now? So we definitely want to make sure that A-CAN board members are connected with our health department, uh, leadership so that we can really collaborate. Uh, to work as best we can together to support our aging population across Adams County. So thank you again for all, for being so active in A-CAN. And, uh, and for all you're doing for coming to visit us today. We'll look forward to future collaboration. I want to say thank you to the staff for a wonderful Stars and Stripes event on July the third. Um, it was, the fireworks show was great. I think it was the, the weather cooperated and, but so many families came. We just arrived throughout the evening, right up until the time that the fireworks display started and I think everybody had a wonderful time. So thank you for all the hard work you did there to create a wonderful event for community to come together and enjoy our beautiful summer weather and our beautiful regional park. And enjoy the fireworks. So that was, that was great. Thank you so much. Um, I just, by means of making sure that we're being, that we're communicating and are transparent with folks in Adams County. HR1 was signed into law by the president on, actually on July 4th and what this. House reconciliation bill, budget bill, whatever, however you want to, whatever you want to call it, so that it makes sense to you. We know, um, because our staff has been tracking for several months through various iterations of this bill, as it was pending. Um, are going to have some big impacts on Adams County. So with, um. I'm going to call them cuts because that's, it's going to be a decrease in spending. We are going to see a decrease in spending in both Medicaid and supplemental nutrition, or known as SNAP. Um, and other services across Adams County. They are not happening immediately, but we know they're coming and. The snapshot that we all need to keep in mind is that one in three of our Adams County residents currently are on Medicaid. So people are going to be losing access to healthcare, uh, access to healthcare and coverage of doctor visits and things like that. That's going to affect people across the wide spectrum. Folks with disabilities, seniors, and children. Um, we have about, so that's about thirty percent of our population. We also have, I think it's seventy, on SNAP, was it seventy thousand? Seventy thousand residents in Adams County receive food assistance through the federal government, through this federal program. That spending is also decreasing, which means that people will have less food security. So that also is something that's going to be implemented. Uh, we're going to see. It's a very large bill. I know our human services staff and other staff, especially like in our health department. Have been tracking this and doing contingency planning. So we'll continue to keep you updated. We're going to, because we're going to uncover more things. As we dig through, I think it's over nine hundred pages. The bill is over nine hundred pages. So there are a lot of impacts coming. Our board and we're very committed to making sure that we can deliver as many services to folks in Adams County and support you in any ways that we can. Uh, but I just wanted to flag this right now that these are people in our community who are definitely going to be impacted. These are federal pass-through dollars that usually come to us from the federal government that we will not be receiving. We, uh, did actually, um. Right before, I think it was back on the second, which was the day before the House voted on the bill. We did have a meeting over Zoom with, uh, our representative of Congressional District Eight, Gabe Evans. Um, he was, we were very grateful that he and his staff put together a meeting so that we could discuss this. We did explain these impacts and some of the data I just shared with him and told him that we do not, as a county, have the funds to backfill all of this. Federal funding that we will now not be receiving as a result of this bill. Um, so that he was fully aware of the impacts to the constituents that we share and the people we all care about here in Adams County. So we will continue to be in conversation with him and also with Representative Lauren Boebert's office, because she represents a big portion of Adams County as well. To navigate this situation as best we can for everybody. So if you have questions, it's okay to ask us what's, what's happening. Um, we are figuring it out together with our, our Cracker Jack staff who've been looking at this, um, every which way to find out. What we need to know to do the very best that we can for residents. But I want to be transparent and realistic with everybody that these are the budget constraints under which we'll be focused. Living, living, under which we'll be living, and this will be impacting our 2026 budgeting process, which begins very soon. So, uh. Having said all that, it is great to live in Adams County. I remain optimistic about the continued growth that will be coming to our county because we are a great place to live. There are a lot of things we can do on the local level and we still have a lot to celebrate, like Stars and Stripes. And we have the county fair coming up in a couple of weeks, the best fair in the state. And I think that we will continue to, uh, be a great community here in Adams County. And I'm very proud and privileged to serve you all as an Adams County commissioner. So I look forward to seeing you all out and about in the community and, uh, I hope you're all having a wonderful summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Not seeing anything. Okay. We share a lot of the sentiments of Commissioner Henson. It's a time of, um, change in our nation and in our county. Uh, we did reach out to our congressional representatives. Some responded, some did not. Um, but we will continue, we're dedicated as a board to continue to provide the level of service, uh, that our. Residents expect from us, understanding that we do have some federal funding challenges that are ahead of us. And we don't know the total impact of that. Um, the statistics were correct. Hundred and fifty thousand, um, members of our community are on a Medicaid program. Seventy thousand are on a food assistance program. I understand that there's, um, a big push out there to, uh. Curb the fraud and waste and I need to go on the record that, um, last week through many, um, briefings that we were receiving from our staff. Uh, that the federal law is, is that there are no, um. Resident, or there's no, uh, person of immigrant status that are on our rolls and that is still correct today in Adams County. Um, I understand that there's a big push for work, um, requirements for those that are receiving benefits. The statistics show here in Adams County that a significant portion of our population are the working poor. They are rent burdened, uh, meaning that more than fifty percent of their take-home pay goes to rent. These are people that are working that receive these benefits. Um, it are safe, there are safety nets that help families that are either moving into a caregiver position that are taking care of. A sick child, an injured family member that can no longer work, that they, um. Have these programs in place to help them through emergencies. Those are the concerns that we have as people get older, as kids. And circumstances affect families and our. Members of our community. Um, those are the challenges. Those are the stories that we want to share. That it is not the broad brush that what you're hearing, it is really those safety nets of how do we help citizens through a crisis? How are we there providing food? And we did meet, um, very graciously and congratulations to Community Table. We did meet with a food pantry that are opening their doors today. We met with them yesterday. They're located in Arvada. Um, we were there with the Jefferson County Commissioners. We're also there with the mayor of Arvada. Um, that there is a. Sense of leadership here in the Denver metro region that we will come together. We will support our residents. As a metro area, as county commissioners, as city council members, as city mayors, um, that we will come together and we'll get through this. So those are all I have to say and I saw Commissioner Pinter's hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, you're hearing from all of us on HR1 because it is going to be so catastrophic across Adams County. Um, as was highlighted by my, uh, colleagues, many of the talking points either, um, do not exist in Adams County. Or are, um, fiction as they are being described and said to the cameras in Washington DC. Our residents, as I was so illustrated by my colleagues, are many of whom are on these services, are working poor already. And if you have anyone who is working an entry-level job or is a solo parent. Um, it is so overwhelming for them to make ends meet. And they rely on these services to make sure that they have healthy food in the house. They have access to daycare. They have access to medical care. And we know that when access to medical care is cut off, um, then folks do not have healthcare coverage. And we'd be returning back to decades ago where people were getting their healthcare. In the emergency rooms, which increased costs for everyone and also increased devastating outcomes for the individuals who sought their care that way. We just did a minimum wage, living wage study and the number that haunts me from that study is looking at the living wage required. For a solo parent of two children. This is a living wage, so they are self-sufficient. Paying all their bills, daycare, gas, sport fees, school fees, et cetera, without any government assistance. A single parent with two children is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We have a lot of solo parent households in Adams County. We have a lot of single wage earners. Um, and if you split that number across two people and add a second adult to the home, that number becomes seventy or eighty thousand dollars per. It's much more manageable. But for a lot of our solo parents who are working, you know. A lot of people who make less than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. The Medicaid expansion makes sure that they have healthcare coverage for themselves and for their families. It is really hard to pay your bills out there right now. And when we have seen this sort of, um, uh, we have work requirements already. When we've seen these sort of changes impacted in Arkansas or in Georgia who attempted these, we saw automatically twenty-five percent of the people on programs kicked off. And so for Adams County, we're looking at twenty-five thousand households-ish. That will move from receiving support and services today, who won't receive them at the full implementation of this bill. And I don't think that's what we want for our neighbors. I don't think that's what a social safety net means. And I, for one, am really glad to be with a board who is consistently lobbying, meeting with our representatives. Articulating information, researching the data, and finding solutions as best we can in this murky environment. And I just. And I just want to say I'm grateful to serve with all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Just need a motion to approve.
Move to approve is presented in the agenda.
Second.
The consent calendar passes five to zero. So next item is the county manager, Dionne.
Good morning. We have two items for new business today. The first is a resolution approving the lease agreement between Adams County and the University of Denver for office space located at the Colorado Air and Spaceport. And we have Jeff Kloska, who will be presenting on that.
All right, good morning, commissioners. Jeff Kloska, Director of the Colorado Air and Spaceport. So today I'll present before you a lease agreement, as Dionne mentioned, with the University of Denver. So we have an office space in our North Office Building there at CASP. And the University of Denver would like to lease this space for one year for educational purposes. In lieu of a monetary rent, both parties agree that the tenant will provide the services that set forth in Exhibit B of this lease that I'll talk about here in a second. And these services include providing support for ongoing development, creating a Six Sigma Center of Excellence, for CASP and regional, national and international marketing of the Colorado Air and Spaceport through DU's partnerships. So the scopes of the services are as follows. Denver University will provide and support for the ongoing pre-development agreement between Adams County, CASP and Altitude X. This support will take the form of quarterly projects that must be agreed upon by both Adams County and DU. The project scope and timelines will be clearly defined before any of those projects proceed. So it will be a minimum of four projects that are completed during this year term. This is what will be the beginning of a formal Six Sigma Center of Excellence program for CASP. There are only a few airports that formally deploy these type of arrangements, and we're hoping that this will be the next. DU will work with CASP and Altitude X on using Six Sigma to institutionalize processes related to CASP's ongoing operations and redevelopment strategies beyond just this DU-sponsored projects. What we want to do is create partnerships within the Denver region and around our airport influence area for Six Sigma Center of Excellence partnerships that would benefit CASP, Altitude X and DU. The creation of these partnerships between the three organizations and the creation of the Center of Excellence, we're hoping will become a center of best practice just beyond our immediate area and extend those partnerships into the Denver region and the rest of Adams County. We want this to be both regional, national, international marketing forecast through DU's extensive partnerships and creation of a larger Six Sigma Center of Excellence that is highly recognized in the industry. And as time goes on, working with Altitude X, this is one of the first main, I will call it wins through this P3 that Altitude X has brought into us. And we're hoping that this will begin to snowball on the educational front. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Thanks for being here. Questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio?
It's not really a question, it's just a compliment. I want to thank you, I want to thank Altitude X and the rest of your staff on working on this. This is exactly why we have the spaceport, is to be a catalyst for economic development and growth. The spaceport is something where Adams County is able to plant a flag of our place in the aerospace alley. This front range is so important player in the aerospace community and the aerospace industry, that it's great for us to have our place in that community. So I appreciate your work on that. I think this is the kind of thing where we hope that people growing up in Adams County, you can be what you can see. And they'll be able to see things in Adams County, in their own backyard, where they're going to be able to see the kind of jobs and opportunities that exist. It's going to be a while before we have a space plane take off and land at Colorado Air and Spaceport. But in the meantime, it's supposed to be this catalyst for economic development and innovation. This is the start. So thank you very much. I support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? I'll just say about this Colorado Air and Spaceport. I had an opportunity to travel on behalf of the spaceport and represent the county. And it's good to get a perspective on where you fit in with the competition. And where you fit in as far as, are you a cutting edge, are you a follower in the industry? And so the Colorado Air and Spaceport is owned and operated by Adams County. It resides in Watkins, which is just east of us. And so one of the publications that was available during this conference, as I went through many publications and paperwork and whatnot, handouts at this conference, the spaceport did make one of those publications. And the really interesting thing, and we signed, we signed several months ago, Boom. So if you're familiar with the Air and Spaceports companies, Boom is a United Airlines product. It is for, they're beginning the research and development for supersonic passenger travel. And in this publication, it specifically named the Colorado Air and Spaceport and Boom as the leading manufacturer right now in the world, above China, when it comes to research and development of the components that will lead to passenger air travel, sonic travel. So I think that that was, that was important, like I even signed the contract. We were all here, we all did a big, you know, big hurrah for Boom, and thank goodness Boom is here. It's really the significance of that. And we have some lobbying allies that we need to build in Washington with our Colorado delegation when it comes to federal things that are affecting Boom. One of those things is the, obviously it's a supersonic boom when they get to their cruising altitude of the decibel levels and what that looks like here on the ground. And so we have a lot of work to do, but it was very exciting to see that it was named specifically here in Colorado, in Watkins, that Colorado Air and Spaceport is leading passenger travel, research and development through Boom. And they're located right here in Adams County, so I'm happy to support this as well. And thank you for being here, Jeff. Thank you always for your ambassadorship for the Colorado Air and Spaceport and bringing these wonderful education partners to the spaceport and Altitude X. Really appreciate it. So with that, any other comments from commissioners? I'm happy to make a motion to approve the resolution, the lease agreement between Adams County and the University of Denver for office space located at the Colorado Air and Spaceport.
My screen is frozen. Maybe a voice vote, because my screen is frozen as well, unfortunately. Sorry, Jamie.
Commissioner Moloka?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know what, I don't know what I'm doing. You know what it was? I'm just going to say this, hi. I don't think we actually did a motion in the second. And I, my brain was like, I think Lynn was going to motion, I think Steve was going to second, but I don't think we actually did that part.
Um, it's frozen.
Right, but you took the vote before we did the formal motion in the second. But was there a second?
Yeah.
So you did?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
It's all good.
Third.
Hi. It's my turn, yes.
Jeff is red for you. I don't know what to say.
Listen, I just want the technology to work and not today.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes. So motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much, Jeff.
All right, our next item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Hallmark Incorporated in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for the miscellaneous steel bridge rail repairs project. And Brian Staley, Director of Public Works, will be presenting this item.
Good morning. There we go.
I have some questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Henson?
Hi, thanks, Brian. So you said this is eighteen bridges?
This covers repairs to eighteen.
Repairs. And are most of these along, are these paved roads or gravel roads?
Commissioner, it's a combination of the two. It's a lot of our rural, that's also why it's varied. For the lot of the bridge rails completely missing, a lot of the limitations that people are going to see the reflections, completely missing. So the concern is even higher on the gravel road that we go off the bridges. We do not even have, a lot of this is focused on bridge rails, we do not even have supports in place, so it's very.
That's wonderful. We want, safety, yes. Safety on our roads is a primary concern for us. What is the timeline of this project?
We're splitting this project up so we can use the, we can use the five hundred and seventy-five thousand of the current funds due to remain of this year on six bridges. And we're following up with a little over seven hundred thousand next year, taking in half of the bridge money for that and splitting this into two sections. So there'll be twelve bridges that we finish up early next year.
Okay, so in the next six or seven months, you know. And then, and are we doing a lot of this, or are we contracting some of this out?
We have contracts.
Oh, this is, so we're contracting with, so the Hallmark is doing all of this as opposed to our Public Works? Okay, great. All right, thank you. Those are the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Odoricio?
If there's nothing else, I would make a statement, then offer a motion. I will say that, like, being in Adams County, we're eighteen miles tall and seventy-two miles wide, right? We have urban, suburban and rural. And one thing I've learned over the years is that the folks in the rural parts of our county, the plains, they say, just fix our roads and our bridges and get the hell out of the way. Other than that, this is one of those things that we're doing it, and I appreciate your work on this. And I do appreciate the folks in rural Adams County being able to see some of these improvements, because we do make a lot of investments, and I think we need to continue to show and track those. So when those tough times come, whether it's a flood or something else, we can all work together and highlight the fact that we are not ignoring them, and they are important to our community. So with that said, I will move to approve this motion, or resolution as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
I will also second that. I thought I was voting. The technology and I are not getting along together today.
Okay, so we have a motion by Odoricio, second by Pinter, also second Odoricio. Motion, everyone voted as themselves, it's five, vote passes five to zero.
I just want to know if there's Six Sigma bridges, like that's what I want to know.
I'm sorry.
Never mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next item on our agenda is county attorney.
Good morning, commissioners. We have an executive session on your agenda today, and it is pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the development agreement with Altitude X at CASP.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session. There we go.
Second.
And the motion passes five to zero. So next item on our agenda is land use hearings. Does staff need a minute to set up? I'm seeing nods from them. So we'll reconvene the meeting at ten fifteen AM. I'm seeing nods from them. So we'll reconvene the meeting at ten fifteen AM. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene and we'll start the land use hearing cases. So it looks like you're going to start us off.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners. Jenny Hall, Director of Community and Economic Development. I just wanted to say a few things before we got started with the land use agenda. Both of the cases before you today were previously assigned to senior planner Brian Maron. Brian had to go out of town suddenly late last week. There was death in the family. And so rather than delay those cases, planning and development manager Jen Rutter and principal planner Greg Barnes have stepped in to handle those cases. Just wanted you to be aware of that. They may need an additional moment or two to check the details since they weren't the formal case planners, but to set the tone for that. Also to make you aware that the Maker Boyers case before you is the first one that the board will be hearing since House Bill twenty-four thirteen oh four. This was the legislation dealing with parking minimums since that was passed. So because this location being considered is on one of the designated transit corridors, that changes local government ability to require a minimum amount of parking. And some of the notes within the case file predate when that legislation went into effect. So you may see some comments around a parking variance. That is no longer applicable. So just wanted to call that to your attention. Certainly staff can answer any questions about that legislation if there is need to. But that is the reason behind some potential discrepancies in the notes over the course of the case. So that's it.
Okay, thank you so much for that.
All right, good morning Commissioners. I'm Jen Rutter. I'm the Planning and Development Manager presenting on behalf of Brian Maron. I will be presenting this morning the Toxic and Fine Silver East Sixty-Fourth Avenue Vacation, case number VAC twenty twenty-four dash two. It's located at forty-nine, two hundred, East Sixty-Fourth Avenue. So the request before you is roadway vacation for a portion of the right-of-way of East Sixty-Fourth Avenue. You heard this case just about a month or six weeks ago. This was continued in order to allow staff to assemble a little bit more information and consult with our county attorney's office. So we'll provide some of that information today. Again, this aerial view of East Sixty-Fourth Avenue is just east of Highway seventy-nine and west of Kiowa Creek. The current zone district is agricultural three and a lot of the properties in this area are used for residential purposes. The future land use in this area includes agricultural small scale and agricultural large scale. Small scale is appropriate for smaller agricultural operations that balance housing and agricultural production on the site. Agricultural large scale allows for farming and ranching to be considered as the primary use of the property. So here are some site photos. As you can see, looking north along Highway seventy-nine, this is at the western side of the East Sixty-Fourth portion that's going to be vacated. Looking eastward along this dirt road, it is currently unmaintained by the county, but it is county right-of-way. Then you can look south along Highway seventy-nine and then looking west across Highway seventy-nine. And then on the east side of the portion of East Sixty-Fourth Avenue, looking north into the Martin Marietta mine site, east down towards kind of where the right-of-way terminates, north onto the property to the north, and then west down that right-of-way. As you can see, it's not currently maintained for a lot of traffic. So we added a couple images for some clarity. We did have conversations during the last hearing about several of the properties in the area. The property labeled is number one is the Martin Marietta owned property. That one is currently being mined. They have permitted access onto Seventy-Second Avenue. They do have a little sliver that touches East Sixty-Fourth Avenue, but no access permit has been granted. All properties that wish to access county right-of-way are required to receive an access permit. This allows the county to ensure that there's adequate frontage along the property, that the accesses are not too close together, and that there's adequate culverts in place. So there is not currently one for the Martin Marietta property. The Lincoln property is labeled as number two on your map. They actually have two accesses to public roadways, both an easement onto East Seventy-Second Avenue as well as a sliver of land that connects to Yule Road. There is an easement that exists that was granted by Martin Marietta to Mr. Lincoln that allows them access to their property on the southern end. This easement does touch East Sixty-Fourth Avenue, but there is currently no access over Kiowa Creek or onto East Sixty-Fourth Avenue for this easement. But these will be brought up again a bit later. So here's another depiction of all the properties that are in the area, close-up view. And as you can see on the aerial image, all those properties are labeled with their property owner. And then there are three little dots as you can see. So the first one is red. And so that corresponds to the photo in the lower left-hand corner that says looking north. So that's looking north onto the Martin Marietta property, essentially demonstrating that there's not currently really any feasible access at this time onto their property. There's the green dot that is looking west, again down that access road. Some of these photos were shown earlier. And then again, that blue dot shows the right-of-way and looking east. So there are six criteria of approval that we consider when evaluating a roadway vacation. That it complies with the development standards and original conditions of approval, that there are no non-conforming lots that are created or increased in non-conformity, that this request is consistent with the purpose and intent of the subdivision regulations, that there is no detriment to public health, safety, and welfare, that no adjoining land is left without access to an established public road. And if the roadway is a state or federal highway, the vacation has been approved by the State Transportation Commission, this roadway is not that. And so this criteria is not exactly relevant in this case. So here's a depiction of the plat. It's also included in your staff report packet. It does show the entirety of the vacation, the proposed vacation of East Sixty-Fourth Avenue. Staff has determined that it complies with the development standards, that it's consistent with the intent of the subdivision regulations. There are no non-conforming lots that have been created. There is no detriment to the public good. All adjoining lots will be maintaining access to a public roadway. The applicants have provided a private easement agreement to maintain this road. That is also included in your packet and the applicants and all the property owners are here this morning to speak to this. Again, this is not a state or federal highway. So we did send this request for comments out to all adjacent property owners and property owners and residents in accordance with the development standards and regulations. We did receive two public comments. One comment was in opposition. It was provided by the adjacent property owner, Martin Marietta. And the second public comment came from a nearby resident who holds an access agreement through Martin Marietta property to reach Sixty-Fourth Avenue. And that's the Dave Lincoln property, which I discussed. Did receive some additional written comments from Martin Marietta yesterday, so I'm going to hand them to the county attorney and they will pass them out. These comments discuss that they have been trying to work with the property owners to maintain access on East Sixty-Fourth Avenue. I believe that their applicant is here as well to, or the applicant, the public commenter is here as well to speak to that public comment. Originally, there were several federal agencies with concern. Corelectric had an easement through the right-of-way. Their easement concerns have been resolved. The Bennett Fire District generally has concerns about private roadways in general. There are many private roadways that are created all over Adams County. Some of them are controlled by us and some are not. Some of them are created through survey, land survey plats for larger lots. So it's very difficult for us to control. So the Bennett Fire District, I would say that this roadway vacation would not be dissimilar to other private roads that are in existence in eastern Adams County. The applicant has stated that they would give the Fire District access if needed and we did include that as a condition of approval. So staff does recommend approval. We found that it complies with the development standards, that no adjoining land is left without proper access to a public road, that there are no non-conforming lots created, and there is not a detriment to the public good. We are recommending approval of the road vacation, VAC twenty twenty-four dash two with six findings of fact and three conditions. These are the six findings of fact. And we did add three recommended conditions of approval. These are new since the last time this case was before you that was continued. These conditions were based on conversations that the commissioners were having during their deliberation. This was done in conjunction with the county attorney's office. Again, these are recommended conditions. If the commissioners like or dislike any of these conditions, please feel free to take that recommendation or not. I'll just read them into the record. Number one, the applicant shall install and maintain at least one clearly visible sign indicating that the road is private. The applicant shall provide a key in or access code for the lockbox to the Adams County Sheriff's Office and the local fire district to ensure access to the site by authorized personnel. The applicant shall designate an individual as an emergency contact to provide their contact information to the Adams County Sheriff's Office and Fire District for use in the event of an emergency. So that is the end of the presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you Jen. So the land use hearing process is that we hear from the staff, their presentation, just heard that from Jen Rutter. Questions from the boards, we'll get to that in just a second. Then the applicant has an opportunity to come to the podium to make a presentation. Then again, back to questions from the board for the applicant. And then at that time, we'll ask for public comment. So public comment, each individual will be asked to come and speak. I'll also ask those that didn't sign up if they would like to come and speak. You have three minutes to address the board and you have one opportunity to address the board. So even if you have a question, it is that the, it's potentially, one of the commissioners can pick up that question at a later time if they so choose to do so. But you only do have one opportunity to make public comment. If needed, the applicant responds, if it's requested, the applicant would come up for a response. It's to the commissioners for discussion and then a motion. So at this time, are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Malika then Henson.
Yeah, quick question. So the issue that we had last time when we were discussing this case is the easement access point for Martin Marietta's property. And according to the emails that you just sent out, it looks like none of the neighbors were willing to discuss and signing an agreements. So essentially, the situation is the same as when we left from our previous conversation. Nothing in that easement of access, access of easement has been changed.
That's correct. We just assembled some additional information for you, but no changes have been made to the proposed access.
Okay, because that was, that was the biggest concern is, does, just looking at the map and how it was, it looked like, you know, originally that this was planned as an easement for Martin Marietta's property on Sixty-Fourth Avenue. And you're saying from the plat that that isn't documented with the county. Can you, can you go back to that slide? That we don't have, okay, is there documentation that Martin Marietta's property has an easement to access Sixty-Fourth Avenue?
Martin Marietta does not have an approved access permit, which would be required to access the property. There is a portion of their property that touches the right-of-way. There's also an easement from the David Lincoln property through Martin Marietta's property that touches East Sixty-Fourth Avenue right-of-way. But there is not an approved access permit.
Okay, can they get an access permit in the future if they wanted to?
The county would not have the ability to provide access onto a private roadway if one were requested in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Malika. Commissioner Henson then Odoricio?
Thank you. Can you go to the slide with the properties labeled number one and two? Okay, so the Lincoln property, so when they need to exit their property, they go, they can go north along the Martin Marietta property to East Seventy-Second Avenue. Can they also use Sixty-Fourth Avenue? Will they be able to use that roadway to get to Highway seventy-nine?
There is not currently anything constructed for them to access. There would need a bridge. There would need to be a bridge across Kiowa Creek, which I don't believe that there is one at this time.
Or they can go east to Yule Road.
That's correct.
Okay. Has Martin Marietta ever applied for an access permit for Sixty-Fourth, East Sixty-Fourth Avenue?
Not that I am aware of. We did look through our files and we could not find anything.
Okay, and you're saying if this vacation is approved today, then they would not be allowed to, they would not, they would not be able to get one going forward?
The county wouldn't be able to issue an access permit for private, for a private roadway.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for right now.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Odoricio?
Thank you. I know we seem to be beating this horse to death on this issue. But when you have a property that has, for all purposes, two access points and now this action will take away that property's ability to access through one of those, I do believe we're taking away some sort of value. Now while that was intended for the future and it's not used now, I guess the question will be is, I assume Martin Marietta would prefer to have the ability in the future to access that from the south access at some point. That's how I'm interpreting this email. Is that what you guys agree? Is your interpretation of this issue?
It's my understanding that Martin Marietta would like to reserve the possibility to access East Sixty-Fourth Avenue in the future. Staff is looking at the criteria of approval and they do have access onto a public roadway at this time.
Right, so as long as they have access to public roadway, our obligation ends. The question then is, I guess more of a legal question that I, I don't know if we want to go into executive session on this or not, but I'd be open for a brief executive session to have a conversation. But those are the things I'm, and then I'd be happy to do that after we listen to some other comments too from folks.
More questions?
Yes, Commissioner Henson?
So, thank you. I think this was explained to us in previous public So, thank you. I think this was explained to us in previous uh public hearing on this. Who currently, do do does the, who currently maintains East sixty-fourth Avenue?
Uh the residents that that live adjacent to that uh that piece of right of way have taken it upon themselves to do improvements and to do the maintenance to that right of way.
And that was because it's not a county constructed road and our vehicles are not that we have safety concerns of driving our vehicles or snowplows on, as I recall, is that is that true?
Um I might call on the public works team.
I wanna be clear about that uh going forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ian Cortez, right of way supervisor. Um yes, that is correct. The the road was never constructed or made or constructed to county standards back when the road was dedicated to the county.
Okay, so we so therefore we don't, for safety reasons, we don't drive our county equipment on it, or we avoid doing that because we have concerns about?
We we could put a plow on it, but we it is not for safety purposes, no.
Okay, and so the purpose of the vacation then is, if there if the residents are already maintaining this road, what do they gain through the vacation? Is the ability to put a gate at the end? And also I have a legal question regarding if we they need public services and there's a delay in the sheriff or the fire department getting accessing this. If the street were to be vacated, then does that increase or put any liability on, increase liability on the public service provider? Who who could be delayed because it's a private road with a lock?
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Uh Janet Linquist, Deputy Director of Public Works. Um so as Ian mentioned, um because this roadway was never constructed to county standards, it's just right away. And we have a lot of sections of unmaintained right of way across the county. Um because it's pretty much a section line. So we have a lot of that um across the county and it's pretty common. As development occurs, um there's a lot of situations where neighbors get together and they may grade it once or twice a year um uh to accommodate their needs to utilize that unmaintained right of way. Um in the case of emergency management, so like if say like it's a really snowy day and somebody's having a heart attack and they need to get out there and the road's not plowed, we of course will take an uh action and work with our Adcom nine-one-one partners and try to work our way through to support them. However, um it really has to be initiated from emergency response for to do that. Um so somebody just trying to get out and struggling isn't necessarily something that we would respond to. Um part of the issue is is we do have limited resources in which we can maintain these things. Um to my knowledge, I'm not an attorney, so I'll leave it up to those guys, but I do not believe um that we have a liability of somebody occupying our right way or driving down our right way if it's not maintained. But all of the the smart folks answer that one.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
I'm gonna stay up here just in case there's follow up.
Just to simply answer the question, I don't think we need to go into executive session for this one, but I know the county doesn't have increased liability when private roads become pri- when roads become private and they are blocked off. This is actually quite common throughout the county.
Thank you, that's helpful.
She said it much nicer than I did.
Um I do have a question. If you can go, I don't know if it's the slide before this. Martin Marietta made a case that it's this slide. Um they made a case last time that East sixty-fourth Avenue does abut their property, and that's demonstrated in this slide. So, right now, the county has the right of way, not necessarily the maintenance, because it was private, it was a privately built roadway dedicated to Adams County, which is why we don't see Adams County equipment out there, cuz it's just right of way and it's not to the county's standards of road roadways, dirt roadways. Okay, so is, then it is true that East sixty-fourth Avenue does touch Martin Marietta?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so what Martin Marietta said is that they do abut East sixty-fourth Avenue and they do have access there.
And and I would probably um frame it again, it's unmaintained right ways. In the scale of accesses that we're looking at, um like if you were gonna buy a piece of property, you want access onto a public road, like a publicly maintained road. Most like if I tried to go buy a mortgage, if you don't have access to that, a lot of times they won't even give you a mortgage. So it's really the fact that they have access to a publicly maintained road is the critical piece of their property. However, they may very much so like having access to an unmaintained county right of way that is abutting their property. Those are, I think, are two different spectrums of discussion, I guess is maybe the way I would point it out.
Commissioner Pinter.
Are you good?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. Um thank you, Janet. Um in looking through this, you triggered something for me.
We're having this conversation here. Obviously, this is public record, but it's not public record that's tied, as I'm aware, this discussion component isn't always tied to the title. And I'm just kind of curious, like when you mentioned the mortgage and the title of evaluation investigation, so it prompted two questions, which you may not have answers to, but I'll ask and then we'll see where we go. Um this access, um that is, this is the best visual I've seen to demonstrate the Martin Marietta access to the unmaintained East sixty-fourth Avenue. And I do agree with um my colleagues, um particularly Commissioner Odericio, that this is a property value. Whatever value is assigned to it, it is not nothing. How wide is that section with the green and the blue dot, the Martin Marietta touch point to the unmaintained East sixty-fourth? Is it feasible for a roadway? I know there's not a bridge on Kiowa. I know there's some challenges, but like what are we talking about and how will that be reflected in the chain of title?
So if I can, I'm gonna talk road construction a little bit, and this is at a higher level theory place, so I'm not gonna speak directly to this one cuz I don't have a measuring tape out there to measure the full length, and you know I'm an engineer, so I'm a linear thinker. Um so in general, when you have um a county right of way or any kind of what we consider like a all-weather surfaced road, like our gravel roadways, we're aiming for a minimum, bare bare minimum of a twenty-foot road and then typically
Ten on each side.
Ten on each side. But typically, if you're having, and I'm making an assumption here that Martin Marietta would utilize this for a trucking use, you're wanting twenty-two or larger, sometimes twenty-four foot to accommodate truck traffic. Because if you looked at some of these larger trucks that are used um for uh for trucking, their mirrors stick out a ways and you don't want two trucks just in the width of their body to hit each other. So I would say, i- is it usable? Yes, because I can get a car down, I can get a very good all-wheel-drive car down that. However, I don't know that that would be suitable for trucking.
That's a helpful distinction. Um does someone have a comment on where this would be the, how wide it actually is? Does it meet the twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot? And and that's been shared already, I apologize. Jen's right, I don't know, might love to get on my eye contact and make a decision.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. Um I I did receive a phone a friend. Um it is thirty feet in width, that property, and then Sally, did you have additional?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, Sally Daggett from the county attorney's office. If you go to slide eleven, which is the, and it's two sheets of the pros vacation plat, and so if you look at the sheet that's on the right, um and then it's kind of a continuation, they did a uh match line, but where Jen just had the arrow, or maybe that was Janet, um right there, that it's thirty feet wide.
That may be with the right of ways. That doesn't necessarily mean the gravel road that's there is actually thirty feet wide though. I wanna put that
Sure, sure, but we also agree that West sixty-fourth is not, or East sixty-fourth, I apologize, is not maintained to a county standard currently. So that makes, that's consistent with, I think, how it's been described. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Jen, public works, not seeing any. Okay, thank you, Janet. All right. So next we have the applicant um come down and make a presentation. So if the applicant would please come down at this time, state your name and address for the record. Steve's hand was, Steve, I I didn't, I took from the county, as they're making their way down, I took from the county attorney's comments that an executive session wasn't needed. I go back to you, Commissioner Odericio.
I think the um, go ahead.
I really was just in reference to Commissioner Henson's question. I felt like that was a pretty general statement that I could, if the board would still like an executive session, we can certainly do that. I think Commissioner Odericio implied maybe we should wait until later in the process.
First of all, yes, I do believe um we'll leave that decision till after everyone else testifies. Also, how I'm interpreting what the county attorney is saying is that there is no vested right in uh access to right of way that is not created or maintained at this point. And that doesn't become vested to the property owner until it's an actual, and I kind of along lines of what Commissioner Pinter was asking, but it's the viability of doing so. And then later on, I'll ask the question of if the um Martin Marietta folks were to want to build and let's say this vacation didn't go through, what would be the requirements of them to build the road out to uh along sixty-fourth if they were to do that in the future? That'd be, kinda goes along lines of viability. It goes along lines of what Commissioner Pinter was asking. That could be pushed back. I'll go ahead and not ask for the executive session until we're done with this. Testimony.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, welcome. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Uh my name is Shawna DuBois and I'm at sixty-four twenty Highway seventy-nine. I just wanted to point out, um this visual is good because where the red little ends, that's like halfway point from the Palom's property. And Martin Marietta's property doesn't start until the next dotted line, so the gravel road that was created and maintained by the neighbor doesn't even butt up against their property. And then I, if you could go to the picture that has the three. So the far right, that's where that you're look, that picture is from where the road stops, like where we made the road, that's where it stops. So on the far right, the one that says Looking East, you can see that fence line. That's the view that butts up to Martin Marietta's property. So that basically goes into that other person's home. So I mean, there might be an easement there, but in that picture, it's grass. So just to give you a better visual of. Um and then the Martin Marietta, when they first came to the neighbors and asked, they said they had two issues. They were worried about whether or not the county would stop maintaining the road and whether they would have emergency access to their property. The county has never maintained the road, so that one was a null and void. Then they said they wanted emergency access and we said, okay. The fire department, if there was a fire in the creek, the fire department does whatever they need to do regardless of the neighbors. And so everyone's fine with that, although there is a considerable drop-off at the property line, so it's the fire department would never drive a truck down that road anyway. Um so then we waited for a month or so for Martin Marietta to get back to us, and they sent us a easement agreement that none of the neighbors were willing to sign, and the reason was because in the easement agreement, they wanted to allow access to themselves, their contractors, anybody that they wanted to allow there. And they included in that, that if um the road wasn't up to their standard, they would fix the road and then they would present all of us neighbors with a bill for their improvements on the road. So hopefully you could see why none of us were willing to sign that. When we met here and you guys waited, you know, you postponed the meeting. We told the gal, the representative, that no one was gonna give them access and we're not gonna pay for them to fix the road that we don't want them driving on in the first place. So then they said, okay, well, that's a starting point. Well, they waited until the thirtieth of June to send us a new potential easement that took that clause out. So they did email in in the interim about, well, what do you guys wanna do? And we said, nobody is gonna sign that. If you wanna define emergency, then we could maybe put something in writing. But again, they waited till the thirtieth to send us their revision. And I didn't, I don't even check my email that frequently, so unfortunately, I didn't read the new one, but so that's kind of the two points, I think, where I wanted to point out. And then also, as the team uh mentioned earlier too, that as far as their mining operations, they can't even access sixty-fourth because it's not in their permit. And I know that their legal team is looking for, you know, thirty, forty years in the future, which is understandable, but why should that affect us now? And they, they can't physically drive from sixty-fourth to their property because there's the fence, and the fence has been there for forty-five years. So I'm not sure who would tear down the fence if they wanted to actually drive on their property, but currently they cannot even access their property unless they take down the fence.
My name is Deborah Tocheck, forty-nine, two hundred East sixty-fourth Avenue. And um that Shawna was talking about the drop-off there, it's more than a hundred foot, so how would a fire truck get there unless they, unless the people had repelling equipment to get down there? To give any emergency help to anyone anyway. So that that would be interesting. Um another thing is, um as far as the emergency stuff goes, uh we have tractors, John Deere. In fact, when we've had snowstorms out there and can't get out, um my husband just goes along and clears that road. He has gone all the way from our home to four and a half miles into Bennett Clearing Highway seventy-nine, pulling fire trucks out of the ditch. So we don't have trouble getting in and out of there, so we don't really need help and other, and all the other neighbors have tractors as well, so and as far as emergency access um in a snowstorm or something like that, I don't think it'd be a problem when it comes to that. And we've been ma- we built the road fifty years ago. We've been been maintaining it for fifty years. No one has ever had trouble getting in and out of there since we've done that. And I, one question I have is, the right of way Adams County doesn't own the entire sixty-fourth Avenue. They only have like three portions of it. That's all that's been dedicated to them, so that's why Martin Marietta would have to have easement from us because the county doesn't own the entire sixty-fourth Avenue. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Um questions for the board for the applicant? Commissioner Odericio?
So um who, is your property the Bose Charrington property, other of you?
The, the what?
On the slide.
Oh, no, that's
No, um we are just off of seventy-nine. Uh we're the first property off of seventy-nine.
You're more to the west.
They own the, they own the Firehouse Youth Center and then our, their residence and our residence abut seventy-nine, so we're not on that map.
Okay, so effectively, this would be, um when I'm looking at, this is a question for staff, when I look at the Looking East photo, that looks like they're on the Bose Charrington property. Or are we in a situation where that fence should actually, where the Bose Charrington property might be utilizing Martin Marietta's property right there?
I'm sorry, that those, that that's Tara and Rick's. Tara, Tara and Rick's are one of the applicants, but they're just not here at the moment.
That's fine. This question is still for staff. In looking at this slide, it appears to me, if the blue dot is placed where it's that the actual folks who own Bose Charrington property are actually using the Martin Marietta portion of their property to get to and from. In fact, they've got stuff stored on their property. It's got, so help me out here.
Yeah, I would say that from the aerial imagery that we have in front of us, that that's what it appears to to be.
I think I can help, um but I don't have the mou- control of the mouse, so I can come up and show you maybe with the mouse.
If you guys wanna sit down, feel free. The question is not for you. It's now a staff question, based on the stuff that you talked about.
This right here is the end of East sixty-fourth Avenue as has been dedicated to Adams County, okay? And so the Bose Charrington properties, they um have an access easement over this Firehouse Youth Center property, like right along here. That's uh that that's how they legally access their property here. This little finger here is on slide eight, what's shown, part of what's shown in green. That is the little finger. That is the little finger that Martin Marietta, um, owns here. They own this and David Lincoln has an easement over this. But this here is the end of East sixty-fourth Avenue as has been dedicated to the county and um, I, I'm not, this strip here, I think is actually, it's shown as part of the dedication, but I'm not, this is from some GIS, um, photography. I'm not sure that that, um, little, this little strip here, I think that's part of the Palone property. Cause if you go to slide, I think it's, um, eleven, or which is the, uh, yeah, yeah. Um, so just to recreate here, so this is here, the end of the dedicated East sixty-fourth. And this is that little finger that's, um, in green on slide eight. And it keeps going along the, this is, this is the Marietta property. It's, the full property starts, you know, sort of the bulk of their acreage starts here and then goes over to here, and then this becomes Lincoln over here. Um, so this is the Palone property, so that other, um, slide with aerial photography shows a little finger here, but I think that's actually part of the Palone property. If that makes sense.
Well, I, to be honest with you, the fact that we're saying, I think, and it might, uh, those are things that make me nervous when we're having to make a decision based on, like, down to the granular level of a vacation of property and the potential of us taking property, uh, or of some sort of potential value. I understand it's not legally vested because it's not a created or maintained, uh, right of way, but there, what, what, what I'm asking has actually just generated even more concern that we don't have a good grasp of the detail of what specifically we're being asked to make a decision of today.
I, I would say you can rely on this survey and what I am questioning is really the GIS and the aerial photography. Uh, this, uh, here is the survey, it's been, um, signed by, signed by a licensed surveyor. And so that's why I was trying to couch that, um, other slide as I think, because this is what the survey is and I think you can rely on the survey, which shows that Marietta only, um, abuts, um, East sixty-fourth right here and does not have any interest in this upper portion up here.
Wait, so where does Martin Marietta's portion end? And that finger to the right is Martin Marietta then?
I think we're asking because we can't read it. And so we're just like, what does those words say? On that little finger?
On the, it says, private road, road three nine three one, page seven fifty-seven. And parcel reading AKA East sixty-fourth Avenue extension and it gives a reception number for that. And if you go back to slide.
Well, sorry, if you go back to slide eight, um, that, um, green strip, and then if you go back to slide eleven, is, um, what starts to, yes, thank you Jen, there. That's the green strip on slide eight.
Chair?
Yes. Um, now I'm back to where we were before, where I would like some attorney advice on what is the differentiation between, um, property rights takings, re, you know, reasonable understanding of right of way. Like how does access, I think there's some frameworks here that I want to make sure that I'm fully understanding the legal concept for. I, I don't know that that's really packaged as a question. So, but I, I don't know how to ask what constitutes a taking in this instance without some more understanding of the legal framework.
Well, I, I can give you just an overview of the legal framework as relates to a vacation, okay?
Okay.
There's a state statute, uh, it's in title forty-three, um, section two dash three oh three, which, uh, talks about different ways that a public roadway can be vacated. And as relates to a, um, vacation by a city, town or county, um, state statute says that no platted or deeded roadway, um, which exists shall be vacated so as to leave any land adjoining said roadway without an established public road or private access easement connecting said land with another established public road. So that's the statutory framework. And then if you go, I think Jen, to slide number, uh, with the criteria, it is slide number ten. And you can see the fifth bullet down, and that's paraphrasing, but that's language from the development standards about what the requirements are for roadway vacation. And the full language says, one of the criteria for approval of vacation is vacation does not leave any land adjoining the roadway without an estab, established public road or private access easement connecting said land with another established public road. And so that, uh, fifth criteria down, it's, um, is the same as the statutory requirement. So if you go back to slide number eight. So for the Martin Marietta property, it's shown as with the number one, they have legal access from the blue and white check strip to East Seventy-second Avenue. So that is their, um, established access to a public road. And for the double, the David Lincoln property, which is shown in as number two, they also have, that, those property owners have the right to use that blue and white check access point to East Seventy-second Avenue. So that's their access to an established public road. The Lincoln property also has, uh, owns that little finger, um, that is, um, could be an extension of East sixty-fourth Avenue, which has never been dedicated or accepted by the county. But that little finger there to Yule Road is theoretically another access point to, and they own that land in fee, um, to a public road. So the Lincoln property is actually two accesses to a public road. Um, so the Colorado law does not, um, require uh, that every property have two accesses to a public road from the private property. And indeed, the, while Martin Marietta owns parcel number one and might in the future like to access East sixty-fourth Avenue, as Jen Rutter indicated, that would require a separate approval process that Martin Marietta hasn't yet gone through. So, um, again, the, the county in vacating East sixty-fourth Avenue will not leave either Martin Marietta or David Lincoln, parcel one or parcel two, without access and, uh, to a public road. So there is, there, I don't think either property owner would be able to successfully challenge this vacation of East sixty-fourth Avenue as a taking of their private property because they only have one private or public access way, access as opposed to two, which they might want at a later date. So I, there, I, I don't think there are any taking issues with this vacation. It's really just a matter um, of the commissioners deciding whether the, the approval criteria have been met, those six criteria that are in the development standards. But I don't think there is the possibility of a successful taking challenge if the commissioners were to act to vacate East sixty-fourth Avenue as presented today.
Sally, that's actually really helpful. And for me, that answers my question, which is, um, it isn't that, um, a property owner has to maintain as many accesses as they previously have. They have to maintain a access to a public road. And that is met here both by one and two, because two, you said, owns in fee simple, that little finger out to Yule Road, which means that it can't be, um, impacted by any future land use decisions because they own it. So for me, that answers my primary question, uh, that we are meeting the legal standard. Thank you for explaining it what feels like three or four times to get me to a place where I understand it. So I'm, I'm good with the understanding that we are in compliance with the roadway vacation. Um, and it now is a matter of parcel one, Martin and, uh, Marietta could have negotiated better with the other um, property owners along East sixty-fourth, had they wanted to preserve, um, additional rights, but that didn't happen and that's not our legal obligation. Thanks.
Are there other questions, were questions from, from the board for the applicant? And then we'll go to public comment.
A question for staff still.
Okay.
If I might, nobody still answered the question about two things now. Number one is if we go back to that photo there. If the photo was taken on Martin Marietta's property facing east, it sure looks like to me that the Bose Charrington property is encroaching and using Martin Marietta's property for storage and access to the very road that they want to prevent Martin Marietta from using. Am I wrong?
I can just say that Brian Maron was the one who went and took, took those photos and he's not here today. And whether that dot is exactly where he stood when he took that photo, we don't really know. But it, it was, the photo was really taken as a general representation of what the view is looking east.
That doesn't answer the question, offense, I'm sorry. And then the fact that we have some potentially inaccurate, as stated by attorney, that this visual is inaccurate, but it is the crux of the entire conversation here. Um, and just because there might be, um, the government can uh, remove somebody's access to their property legally, doesn't necessarily mean that there's not value to what we would be taking away from that property owner. And so I guess we will have this conversation in executive session. I would be happy to hear the rest of the conversation, but none of the questions that I was bringing up have been answered yet, other than to say, don't worry about it, this is legal and we can get away with it and we can do it. And that doesn't make me feel comfortable. So let's go ahead and listen to the rest of the testimony.
Commissioner, if I, if I can just clarify that the plat, the actual survey is the official legal representation of the property lines, the distances, what, where our right of way ends. Um, the photos, the overview, the aerial photos, were intended to provide some assistance in visualizing. But I do want to just clarify that the document we're relying upon is this exhibit right here, because that is the legal representation of the rights of the parties.
And we can't read it for ourselves, so we have to have that written. So I'm going to, I'm trying to open it on the computer again, and I'm having a difficult time opening it.
The attached, it is attached electronically. We're unable to open the attachments from the DAS.
You're trying to access the, um, staff report, PDF?
The plat, the plat itself.
Slide number eleven, even when we open on a different computer, is not legible. For, at least was not for me in my own preparation.
It's in the staff report, um, I'm not sure what page, but the, those two sheets are in the staff report.
It's, uh, page twelve, the staff report.
Yeah.
So if we could have some technical assistance, um, to help us be able to download or view these, um, or take a break, um, so that staff could discuss the executive session framework. I also would like to request a bio break at this time, formally elevate that concern. Um, because I too had trouble downloading and accessing and viewing the packet, which is why I asked Sally to read it to me. But, um, either way, Chair, could we have a bio break?
So it's eleven oh seven, let's go ahead and take, do you want a fifteen to eleven fifteen or we think longer?
Oh, well, I, I think this is just a, a quick break and then we might have an executive session when we return.
Okay.
That's what I'm reading from my colleagues.
Break now, thank you Jamie, till eleven fifteen and then we'll reconvene. Break now, thank you, Jamie, till eleven fifteen and then we'll reconvene. Okay, the time is eleven eighteen. We're a few minutes late coming back. Um, we're gonna reconvene the land use hearing case. And we left off, uh now we have hard copies, um we left off regarding the East Sixty Fourth Avenue vacation plat. And there were questions from the board regarding many things, one of them which is uh a property owner and how it abuts potentially East Sixty Fourth Avenue. So Board, if you want to review this real quick and then we can get to questions.
Chair, I think we're at a place where an executive section could be really helpful to get some attorney advice on the different land actions that are before us. And I don't know if a colleague would like to frame the question or if the attorney would like to frame a question.
Yes, it would be pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding the current land use case.
Happy to make that motion, mo- so moved.
You have a motion and a second, Jamie, if you want to do a uh the roll call vote, unless you have.
I don't have anything on my screen.
Commissioner Malika. Commissioner Henson. Commissioner Odoratio. Commissioner Pinter.
Yes.
Commissioner Baca.
Yes, so we will go into executive session. Before we do that, um I'm sure the attorneys, does anyone want, are there questions from the board specifically on the plats before we go into executive session? Of what we s- what we're looking at? None, just. Okay. None at this time? Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session. You want to meet us in the back? I don't know what team you want to bring together, Heidi.
I know the system pretty well despite the technology issues we face today, so. But I appreciate that.
Of what's to come. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene the meeting for the land use hearing for East Sixty Fourth Avenue, the vacation. Uh, land use hearing, and we had just heard from the applicant, the board went into executive session to receive legal advice. I sent you guys in some information, so I don't need to reiterate what I had in there. I just wanted to clarify some things that have been said today. Our property, the mining is allowed with a conditional use permit, and part of that conditional use permit says we won't use sixty-fourth Avenue for trucking. That we will go out the north gate, so that is why we do not have an access permit on the south end on sixty-fourth Avenue right now. But as you all know, conditional use permits don't last forever, so when that does go away, however the property gets developed in the future, whether we make it residential or something else, that is when we'd primarily be using that access that we would like to keep. And then I think you guys kinda cleared it up, but the, on the south end, the easement is thirty feet, and that is a private road agreement that was granted in nineteen ninety-four as part of book three-nine-three-one, page five-seven-fifty-seven. And then also to clarify, yes, the Bozzi and the Sherrington are using that public access easement that was granted to David, not to them, and that's something we'll have to address in the future, but they are using our property. And that's all I have. If you guys don't have any questions for me?
No questions. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else like to comment under public comment at this time? If you, yes, you're a member of the public, so now's the time to come down. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Shawna DuBois, sixty-four-twenty, Highway seventy-nine. I just wanted to explain the pictures. So the picture that was taken, the one that shows the looking east, that's if you're standing more or less at the end of the vacation point, so on that, you know, the red dots on that prior picture, so that's whether the fences on Bozzi and Sherringtons or Martin Marietta, I don't really know, because the fence has been there fifty years, so for all I know, the fence is like right in the middle of the easement or the private drive, I have no idea, but that, the vacation point would end before you, would be ending, and then you'd look at that, those pictures. So if that clarifies anything. Alright, thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak under public comment for this matter? Okay, not seeing anyone, so it's to the commissioners for discussion, so if anyone would like to start us off? Commissioner Odoricio?
Well, I'm, in looking at this, I have some general concerns. In looking at the criteria, which there, if we could put the criteria on the screen. I do have some concerns, and applying some of the facts of what we heard today, I have concern that we're not meeting the criteria of this particular requirement in order to vacate through public right of way. Aside from my concern that we'd be taking away a piece of access from a property currently owned by Martin Marietta, we've also, as a matter of policy over time, been trying to encourage the proper and and, and kind of raise the bar on how these gravel and aggregate type properties are restored and repaired and ultimately reclaimed and developed in the future, and I think the more we put some unnecessary, we, the more we make it more difficult for future, and I'm talking decades from now, people to be able to turn that into something that the neighborhood could benefit from, I think is counter to the overall intent and purpose of what we try to do, which kind of hits number three, which is the intent and purpose of subdivision regulations, I believe that this does not meet the intent of consistency, conformity, and with the ultimate purpose and intent of trying to allow long-term growth and development. I think that also applies to criteria number four, which is a little bit general health, safety and welfare. If we were to vacate this property, my concern is in ten, twenty, thirty years from now, we're gonna end up having to buy it back from these property owners for some potential future development. With that said, I don't feel like we've met the criteria here. I would vote against this. I'm happy to listen to my colleagues give some comments, and then if they agree, I'd be happy to make a motion to deny this particular vacation. With that said, I do think that there are opportunities for us to explore still to address the ultimate purposes of why the neighbors in this situation are asking for the vacation of this property, which is to address some of the blight and the misuse of that road by people who are coming into that community and dumping or using things, or trying to sleep there, to other things. This is a safety issue that I still think we need to address if it means we do a better job maintaining and trying to address how we can maybe restrict or not restrict, but how to better take care of that right away, so the neighbors don't feel like this is the only recourse for them to feel more safe in their homes. With that said, those are my concerns. I don't believe it meets some of the criteria in three and four for the facts stated in this case, which would include some of the facts presented here, not necessarily limited to what I've said today. But I also would be committed to trying to address the issues of the neighborhood moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you. Thank you to staff and for, for the advice they've provided us with. I have lived in Adams County about twenty-two years now, and there are so many examples of truncated segmented roadways. York Street, Grant Street, Colorado Boulevard, Lowell Boulevard, across that, that, decisions that were made regarding rights of way decades ago have led to, choke points have led to chopped up neighborhoods, have led to adverse impacts on, on development as areas have grown, and I do think that is incumbent upon me as a commissioner to think about those things going, going forward, and creating private roadways can, can inhibit that, which is, which is, has a general impact on the greater community, but also I have health and safety concerns regarding access both to the residents on that roadway and also to the folks on, on the Martin Marietta property and both now who are there to make sure that we can get vehicles in there. So I do agree with Commissioner Odoricio that there are some concerns regarding criterias, points three and four for me in both of those areas. I also thank him for his comments on why, what brought the residents in, which was concern over safety, their, their public safety and whether, I, I don't know, I don't have the answers to that today, but I share his commitment to continuing to work with residents on their, on, in that area to try to address their concerns there. But I don't think that vacating this roadway today is going to solve that possibly in the best way, and also is going to have adverse impacts on the greater community in the future, so I will also, so I will not be supporting the vacation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? I'll wrap this up here then. Commissioner Odoricio articulated it very well. I, looking back, because this was a continuation of the case to a date certain, which is this morning. This started out as a safety concern for the residents, so it was a concern, a, a safety concern of people accessing their land, being in their garages, being on their property. And the process does require us to go through the entire, the, the, the process is that we go through all the criteria. We look at all of those things. Are they conforming, non-conforming lots? Are they, is it accessible for safety, health and welfare for the citizens? You know, it takes in all the criteria, the big picture. And without belaboring what Commissioner Odoricio said, also Commissioner Henson, is that there is a concern here for me on the health, safety and welfare of the residents. So before I get to that, there is something there, and I want to say, and I don't need a response. My folks have lived in unincorporated Adams, still live in unincorporated Adams County, now surrounded by the city of Brighton, for lack of a better term, is that there's something there, something from the previous hearing, I recall that there's a sign that says it's a public, private roadway, or it's a dead end. And I just wonder if that is causing people to stop, if it's a private roadway, it's, looks as is it piquing curiosity? Because, you know, knock on wood, my folks have not had any issues, and I'm not saying that is the case in all areas of unincorporated Adams County. We know that there's issues. We know the county's growing. We know that there's these challenges, but that, that's part of it. That's, even though it's stated private roadway, is it making people more curious to go down that roadway? I have uncles that are farmers, and it is clearly marked that they are, it's private property, but people still access it, still want to access it. So that aside, I don't think it was resolved. I wanted, I have a couple of points to make. There was concern by how is the fire department gonna access it? And while they provide this type of comment for every private roadway that comes before us, in this case, it's, I want to say Bennett's, in other cases, it's other fire departments. That's always a really grave concern of mine, is how does public safety, how does the sheriff access your property if you were to call for services? So that's a concern of mine. The other concern is that you do have another property owner that abuts a portion of this that has potential access to this, and I want to say on the surface, I, part of our packet is an email, and they did email it to staff, it was provided to us this morning. It is from Martin Marietta, is on the surface, I really took a sense of they want to cooperate with the neighbors. Also provided in their email were two agreements. One is an access agreement proposed to the neighbors, another is an access agreement currently standing with the Lincoln property. In the access agreement to the neighbors, I didn't see, and I just skimmed the agreement itself, that there was any chargeback to the neighbors for any type of maintenance, construction to that. So just looking very quickly at the documents, it's several, ten, fifteen pages long, I did not see that. So in the cases of land use, when we don't have, we just had a land use hearing last week. When we, we want people, I want people to be good neighbors when they're when they're coming before us. So being a good neighbor is, I think that the, the proposal by Martin Marietta was reasonable, and they are trying to mitigate some of the challenges there. That has been, I don't know if it went without a response. I didn't hear a response from the applicant at the podium regarding that. So we're looking for places to mitigate. As far as safety and health and welfare, if you have people at your doorstep, if you are concerned for your own safety, that's when you need to call the sheriff's office. That's not something this board mitigates and regulates and enforces. That's not part of our arm, that is part of the sheriff's office. So I'm gonna wrap up my comments. I want to thank those that were here presenting. I know this started out as a very maybe a small safety issue for the, the residents, small safety's concern. In this process, it has to take into account the bigger picture from all of the policies that are currently in place. And it is a county right of way, and it will continue to be a county right of way. So with that, any other comments from commissioners? Okay.
Are we gonna make a motion? Alright, Madam Chair.
I do not have the voting screen, and I'm, I am in the active item.
Madam Chair, I would move to deny VAC two thousand twenty-four dash zero 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 two toxic and fine silver east sixty-fourth Avenue vacation. My apologies if it's toxic. With all the findings of fact that, as stated on the record.
Commissioner Molokap?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baccaro?
Yes. So the land use hearing, VAC twenty-two-four dash two has been denied.
Okay, you ready to start? So we're gonna start the land use hearing case for PRC twenty-two-four dash seventeen Maker Boyers rezoning and preliminary development plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Greg Barnes. I'm with the Adams County Community and Economic Development Department. And the purpose of this public hearing is to discuss two applications that were filed by Maker Housing Partners. The first is a rezoning application to change the zone district designation on a property that's about two acres from industrial one to planned unit development. And the second application would be a preliminary development plan to establish that planned unit development. The proposal is for one hundred and seventeen affordable housing units and approximately forty-two hundred square feet of commercial space. The property is shown on the left image, here in the bottom left of the corner, corner of the image. The property is on the west side of Washington Street, and it is located just north and east of the interchange from I-270 westbound, changing on to I-25 northbound. The site is located within the Welby neighborhood as well, for context. A few images to show you what the site looks like. So looking north, the street that is prominent is Washington Street, and that is looking toward a waste management facility where they store fleet vehicles. Looking to the east, that roadway that goes straight is East Seventy-third Avenue. Washington Street runs across the image there. And East Seventy-third Avenue has been the site of a lot of rezonings over the last decade, from residential one C to light industrial or commercial five zone districts. Looking south, Washington, along Washington Street, the property to the south is used as a funeral home. You can see I-270 off in the distance, and then the image for the west is looking into the site, off into the distance. You can see that exit ramp from two seventy westbound to I-25 northbound. The zoning on the property, as I mentioned, is currently industrial one. It is surrounded largely by industrial one properties, although the southern property is zoned to commercial three. There's a few scattered commercial five zones in the area as well. Light industrial zoning is typically where you'll find uses like warehousing, offices, some general retail could be allowed there as well. The county's comprehensive plan has designated this future land use to be mixed-use employment. So the Advancing Adams Comprehensive Plan and the Welby Subarea Plan work together in this region with the goal of creating a vision for the Welby neighborhood. It is delineated as mixed-use employment, which is more typical with the industrial one zone district. However, the plan itself does call for transportation corridors, of which Washington Street is one, to include mixed-use residential projects, provided they are compatible with the surrounding commercial character. In addition, this Welby Subarea Plan does have three goals that are important to this application, which includes a resilient community, has a diversity of housing incomes and types. It promotes a distinctive character and attractive neighborhood. The goal of the plan is to develop a strong, vibrant neighborhood with a mix of residential, commercial and industrial uses, and then also to provide for safe, efficient, cost-effective movement of people, services throughout the community. So first, let's talk about the rezoning application. Our development standards list for criteria of approval when reviewing a rezoning application. That criteria includes consistency with the comprehensive plan, consistency with the purpose of our development standards, compliance with any specific zone district standards that the requested zone district may be, and compatibility and harmony to the general area. So for comparison, we wanted to show what the industrial one zoning looks like versus the proposed planned unit development. For the industrial one zoning, the minimum lot size is one acre, minimum lot width is a hundred feet, so it could be feasible to further subdivide. So it could be feasible to further subdivide this into two industrial lots with the current zoning. The setbacks have a front setback of twenty-five feet from Washington Street. Uh, five and fifteen feet from the two side property lines and fifteen feet from the rear property line. What the zone district that is being proposed is a planned unit development. And so that preliminary development plan that accompanies this. Would set the minimum lot size at the entirety of the lot, meaning no further subdivision would be allowed in the P U D without an amendment. Uh, the lot width would also remain the entirety of the lot. And then the setbacks are important because they do change the front setback along Washington Street would be fifty feet. The side setbacks would be ten feet to the south and seventy feet to the north. When reviewing the preliminary development plan, the criteria of approval includes uh con- consistency with the comprehensive plan. Consistency with the development standards and their purposes, compatibility uh designed to mitigate impacts. On neighboring properties and land uses, uh, conformance to the county's compre- our transportation plan. Uh, to avoid detrimental impacts, uh, consistency with any drainage plans for the area. Unusual or unique circumstances have been identified and mitigated. Um, that there's consistency with any approved overall development plan for the area. And then compatibility with the surrounding area in general. So let's take a look at the preliminary development plan that's been proposed by the applicant. The uh first few uh drawings here are renderings. Of the proposed structure that would be on this property. The development would be five stories in height, uh, if, if approved, and the maximum height is sixty-two feet. A hundred and seventeen uh proposed affordable units would be on this site. Which would uh provide housing for uh residents with mixed incomes ranging from thirty to seventy percent of the area median income. Um, under nor- normal circumstances, county regulations would acquire a hundred and eighty-three parking spaces based on the total number of units. However, the applicant is proposing a hundred and forty-eight spaces and that's due to site constraints. Um, it is in accordance with the Colorado House bill that was discussed earlier. Uh, which does limit the local government's ability to enforce parking requirements for qualifying affordable housing. Developments on transit oriented areas of which this is one. More images to show you uh the proposed structure. And then their planned unit development, uh, preliminary development plan does uh break down each floor of the five floors of the building. So the first floor would provide uh covered vehicle and bicycle parking. Uh, as well as uh, we're including the surface area of the lot. So there is surface area of uh parking lots as well. Uh, off into the northwest corner of the site. You can see a dog park amenity as well as a picnic area. Uh, for this uh development. Um, lastly, I think it's important to note that the applicant is working alongside with R T D uh to relocate a bus stop. Uh, at the front of the property, which would encourage public transit ridership. For the second floor of the building, uh, the applicant's proposing twenty-seven apartment units, twenty-one of which would be one bedroom, six would be two bedroom. Um, the second floor would have a flexible courtyard space that can be used for outdoor activities. Um, as well as a picnic area. And within the building, uh, there would be a community room uh and a fitness center as well. The third and the fourth floors are um uh similar, so we'll combine them together. Uh, each of those floors would have thirty-one apartments, twenty-three of which would be one bedroom and eight would be two bedroom. And then finally, the fifth floor would have twenty-eight total dwelling units, twenty-one of which is one bedroom and seven are two bedroom. Uh, this floor also has a private rooftop deck that could be used by uh residents of the building. Uh, the applicants have submitted a landscape plan. Uh, it's important to note that this preliminary development plan. Uh, has a multifamily component, which our code requires thirty percent open space as part of any planned unit development. Uh, to meet compliance with our regulations. Uh, due to site constraints, the applicant has proposed twenty percent open space. Um, staff is supportive of this reduction as the applicant is still providing open space through the site. Via the picnic areas, the dog parks and some of the interior uh spaces that I mentioned earlier. Uh, these features do offer future residents variety of recreational, social and communal options. More images to show you the elevations that are proposed for the structure. And so during the referral process, uh, staff notified all residents uh and uh property owners within a half a mile of the site. We wanted to over expand because of the proximity of the uh interstate highways in the area. We sent eight hundred and eighty-two notices. We only received two comments on this. Of those two public comments, one was in support and one was in opposition. Uh, the supportive comment generally supported the project. Uh, they just identified that they did not want section eight housing on the property. Which is not a part of the request. Um, and that uh they were supportive of a mix of incomes. Uh, in, within the residents in the area. Um, the opposition comment identified that the site isn't really suitable uh for the proposed use. Because of the proximity of highways and uh industrial areas. And there is a lack of food access in the area. There was an additional comment from that commenter, which we do have to provide you as well that came in yesterday. Um, and then uh in terms of referral agents, uh, we did hear from agents like C dot, R T D, City of Thornton, Excel. Division of Water Resources and uh the South Adams County Fire District, none of which had any objections to this request. Um, the planning commission did hear this case on May twenty-second. At that hearing, there were four public comments. Two were in support, two were in opposition. Uh, the planning commission did have some concern about the location of the residential units and. It being exposed to health impacts because of the limited access highways and the industrial uses. But ultimately, the planning commission by a five to two vote supported this request. Uh, with twelve findings of fact, two conditions and one note, and that is uh also consistent with the staff recommendation. So I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Are there questions for staff from the board? Not right now. Okay, so the land use process. Um, we'll now have the applicant make a presentation. So if you want to come on down, I don't know who's gonna, who from your team, Peter, thank you. Um, it will then come back from questions from the board. Then there's an opportunity for the public to provide comments. So the comment period is three minutes. Um, you do have one opportunity to make a comment. So even if you have a question. Um, it would be the pleasure of the commissioners if they want to take that question up for staff and or the applicant. Then there's an applicant response period. If it's requested, um, to respond anything to public comment. Back to the commissioners for discussion and then a motion. So if you'd like to introduce yourself, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Um, my name is Chuck Christian. I live at uh two zero uh two, two zero five one fifteenth street. In Denver. All right, so um, you know, I'm, I'm pleased to come, come, uh, to. Be here in, in, in front of you on behalf of Maker Housing Partners and um with this pro- project that we're very proud of. That we are tentatively call, calling the Wellby. Um, let's see, so. Has little background and you know, I'll certainly keep it light. Um, you know, at Maker Housing Partners, we serve twenty-five thousand. Adams County residents each year. Um, in a county of five hundred and thirty-three thousand uh residents that equates to about five percent. As Commissioner Baca noted, uh, there's a hundred and fifty thousand on, on Medicare and Medicaid. As, as Commissioner Henson al- also noted, uh, should be seventy thousand um who are currently on food stamps. So the only thing that is re- really stopping us from reaching that is simply capacity. And um, you know, at Maker, every single dollar that we, that, that, you know, we collected rents. Are used for the items that you see that are listed um in front of you. With this particular building, uh, we see, um, with the mixed use employment. We see that the programs listed at the bottom there, the community organization, the job training, the workshops. Teaching others to eat right, uh, to, to, to per- pursue more, but uh to be able to pursue their, their health. Is something that is a foundational uh right for human beings and something that every. At every person, every uh working individual does need as well. Moving forward, um, so fifty years of experience, we've been, we've, we've, we've been building seventeen communities. And uh twenty-two hundred affordable units. And you know, what sets us aside is whenever we build a building, we, we, we build to hold it for as long as we can. You know, we, we focus on a mainstay and we hope to become a mainstay of, of the community that we build. And therefore, our effort matches the exact same. We focus on places that individuals would want to live regardless of uh, of financial situations or incentives. And so right here, of course, is the entry level college income. As Commissioner Pinter noted, um, you know, these are entry level college educated jobs. And that's the reality of, of what we're building. So with this, we're looking for, uh, we'll be serving families. Um, but we are looking at a more young professional um demographic in order to, to best match the surrounding area. When I see education, when I see health services, I think of them as critical employees. And critical members of the county. And. Wh- why not have, have, have a building that these, that you know, these members can, can walk to, to their jobs? And that's something that, that Maker would be happy to be able to provide. These are some examples of, of the current, of, of, of the, our, our, our current portfolio. Which, which should give you a, a good idea of the product and how much pride that, that we really put into e- e- each of our um buildings. Right here is the income limits and, and max rents that we charge. The, the, these rents do include utilities. On the left-hand side is average median income. And. And on the right side, of course, are the, the typical occupations. Our goals for this property, they man- they align with our, our mission statement and our core beliefs. Um, we believe that a safe, stable, supportive environment is a collective responsibility. We believe that housing stability and a, a real home for all individuals. Is, is something that, that helps others build wealth and in, in the pursuit of their own goals and, and their homes. Our project was designed, ground up to accurately reflect the city. Uh, accurately, accurately, accurately reflect the county's uh general area of the Wellby. And a historic, proud um neighborhood. We, we have no problem investing in, in the higher and, and higher energy standards and water. Because a- again, you know, we are holding this property and we do have a responsibility. We see it to, to the environment. And, and naturally on, and, and naturally in accordance to the plan. We provide the supporting uses to, to serve employment needs in an area that does not immediately provide. What, what we can in terms of supporting the use of employment or, or, or homes in that, in this case. Two things that, you know, we noted on the last um, on the last commission. Uh, the planning commission meeting um was site safety. So I'd like to take this moment and, and, and. Mention that currently um down on the vacant property, right now, we have a third-party monitoring system with, with a camera. And that is uh, that is monitored um twenty-four hours a day. We anticipate gated parking garage fencing and consistent human presence, uh, you know, with a hundred and seventeen. Uh, u- units and that, and, and a commercial, naturally there, there should be a good amount of, of, of uh foot traffic. And an- another thing that, that has been brought to our attention is, you know, we, we, we do want to acknowledge that the community members must have. Government reportable income. Um, and uh, you know, uh, uh, each. Potential member of the community is of course vetted prior to signing a lease. And then the uh, the, the residential parking, uh, whi- which has already been mentioned, but one thing that we do like to. Uh, one thing that we, we, we do like to touch on is uh with overflow parking. So the, the site, the, the study that was referred to in, in this uh legislation. Um, mentioned that fifty percent of income restricted pa- uh parking spaces are usually vacant. We find this to be consistent. Potential uh commercial tenants. So you know, we're of course very excited to be able to bring forward the, the new coffee shop. Uh, at, with, with, in conjunction with, with Bogers Coffee. Some examples of existing uh relationships we have with, with other tenants at other Maker properties will be um kids her, uh, kids first. Head start, small businesses, Food Bank of the Rockies. And our strategy to fill the, the other commercial space, um, about fifteen hundred square feet. Is something that we'd like to work with the county on as a potential co-op with the workforce development departments, a skilled building initiative. And as, as a backup, we, we, we could always um send out R F Ps that can, can assist uh or that, that can look for possible tenants. That are interested in a, in arts or cultural um type of lease that, that can also help. So with that, I'd like to hand it off over to Aaron Bagnall, who is our accountant with Silver Sparn. Thank you.
I wish I was an accountant. I'm not an accountant. I'm an architect. Um, thank you. Good, uh, good afternoon, commissioners. It's nice to be here. My name is Erin Bagnall. I'm from Silver Sparn. That's at three three four zero Walnut Street in Denver, Colorado. Um, let's see here. We, I'm happy to represent the design team and I'm trying, I'm going to try not to repeat the great presentations we had from staff and from Maker. And try to make this really brief. Um, but this is a pretty exciting project for us to have worked on or have continued to work on. It's great to be um creating something in this significant of an area and this significant area as a catalyst of change. And we're excited to realize the vision of the Wellby subarea and um respect the memory of the school and get involved with the neighbors. And create smart density along this corridor of Washington that's being re-envisioned and reimagined as, as Denver. And this area north continues to grow, um, creating smart density on that corner and bringing back the Boyers. Uh, community hub that was such a special place for the neighborhood. Um, in addition to improving the street right of way. And maximizing, of course, the affordable housing potential in the area. So that's why we're here today. And I'll take you through a little bit of stuff, again, trying not to repeat too much. Um, again, the zoning is being changed from I one. To proposed zone of P U D. The reason being, um, Greg did a really good job of, of explaining this. But it allows us the three-dimensional density and quality of, of development for this site in particular. Um, and allows us to be get creative with the setbacks and the, the zoning qualities. So this area again is a, is going to be a, an area of change. Um, but at the same time, there are a lot of really exciting things. That exist in the area that the people that live in this residential neighborhood or building could capitalize on. Um, all of the areas in green are paths and parks. Um, it has a lot of access to education, there's schools. Um, lots of amenities that are, I would imagine, um, only going to get more when you start to increase the residential. Um, uses in the area and access to multi- multimodal paths. The light rail is three and about three and a half miles away. And you know, right now, there aren't a lot of walkable grocery stores. But you have a lot of grocery store options that are very, very close. Uh, this is just as zooming in on this vicinity map and just highlighting the number of residential uses that exist right now in the Wellby area. So you can see that all in blue. And, and that's just to kind of point out that people do live in Wellby. And um, it, it does have a lot of industrial use right now, but there are people that live there and have lived there for a long time. Uh, so how did we get here? The, this schoolhouse, this beautiful historic schoolhouse has existed since nineteen twenty-seven. And it has a lot, had a lot of lives. It existed as a school and a lot of people have a lot of memories about it. Um, it then became this coffee house and this beloved community um hub and meeting, meeting zone. Um, and then unfortunately, it was destroyed in a fire. So we have the opportunity to make something out of this tragedy. And bring the Boyers community back and with the help of um Maker, also bring affordable housing and uh. And residents to the place as well. So. We understand that stuff just like this doesn't happen um alone without community imports we input. So we had, actually held a, a number of charrettes. So we had actually held a a number of charrettes. Our first charrette was with in this campus. Um with a lot of the Adams County county stakeholders and a lot of people from the Boyers community and the Maker community. And it was a great, you know, first first glance at what do we envision here? How do we make housing for people? Um it was really fun. Had a lot of great ideas that came out of it and we met a lot of great people, but in that um. Charrette, we realized that there was a very distinct community that we were leaving out and that is the Wellbe community. And the people that have been in that community for years and years grew up there, their parents grew up there, their parents went in into the. Went to school and so we decided to have an additional charrette with just the Wellbe community and it was really great. Um to hear from them, get the a lot of the stories and the historic um importance of this area. And bring that into our design. We're really excited about being able to do that, so. Two charrettes before we started really concept and after concept, we um again brought a lot of the ideas and the input. And um as a part of the development review, we had a neighborhood meeting, so again, saw a lot of the same people that we had the first two charrettes with. And we were able to bring them to the table with our conceptual ideas and with uh with a real excitement of how we're going to introduce. The the memory of the school and and celebrate the memory of the school within this building. Um so that got a lot of great feedback and you know, when I talk about the memory of the school, the building is um of course, you know. Stack flats, but we have this crucial piece of the design that is the memory of the Washington School, the literal mass. Um it's the corner piece, it's going to be a masonry module that has the same scale and. You know, we're not rebuilding the school by any means. The school is not in any condition to be repaired. That said, we're gonna use the cornerstone and within the exterior and we're gonna have, you know, the windows that. Articulate as as the school did and then we're inside the Boyers. Um in the residential lobby and the space that get you go to the Boyers community um. Coffee house, we're gonna rebuild some of that entry um that we're really excited about. The entry to the Boyer School will get kind of reconstructed. Into that interior and um. We will also use photos and murals that are all inspired of this historic quality of the school. Um so unfortunately, my animations that Chuck knows I worked really hard on are not working in my presentation. I'm not sure why. But I'll just go ahead and say that um I was gonna take you quickly through the site layout. It's it's kind of an obloqued site. We're we're reusing the same entry because it makes sense. It's got the access along Seventy Third and Washington. Um the parking aligns along the north because we need that fire truck turning radius that you see in red. Um have a little bit of parking along West uh Washington Street for the retail and and shared with the residents. But again, that that retail and um residential amenity corner holds the. The bulk of the pedestrian experience along Washington and then the rest of the ground floor is parking in blue. Oh, this is really gonna disappoint me that I don't have these. Okay, so the um the residential bars, as you get up. A lot of the open space in this area in this building is um is raised off the off the ground. It's in this podium level and we have two courtyards that are interconnected. One we call the warm courtyard, one we call the cool. Um it has the ability for when it's to people to use the warm, when they need the warmth of the sun and when they want that. But they also have the shade of the cool courtyard that's um shaded by the building. Um when you get up to the fifth story, the residential amenity is a is a great. Um clubhouse deck area and you can see over the road and to the mountains and it'll be a great space for residents to occupy. Um so Greg talked a lot about this, but we align really well with the sub community or sub area plan for Wellby. Um we're providing economic development, we're reintroducing economic development into the space and providing additional. With the addition of retail. Um the building is going to be brand new. It has a lot of environmental improvements and e-car charging and lots of bike parking and solar panels. And we've been working with um a woman from CU for on on our indoor air quality and our outdoor air quality. To make sure that these residential um. Units will be safe and great to live in. Um again, the historical and cultural, we're gonna reuse a lot of the, a lot of the interior amenity spaces will be inspired by the history of the place. Um in regards to infrastructure and public safety, we are, you know, taking this burned. Unusable site right now and improving it and as I as I discussed, improving a lot of the right of way and the sidewalks and. There's a lot of traffic light improvements and crosswalk improvements so that, you know, there is a lot of. Little shops across the street at that retail environment and so, you know, the improvement of the site of the crosswalks will help our residents cross. Um Washington safely. Uh the recreation and open space, as I mentioned, our our courtyard, our onsite open space is um is elevated, a little bit more urban. But we have a lot of parks around. We have the um Clear Creek Chail and so we are helping connecting our. Residents to those um neighborhood amenities and in creating a vibrant neighborhood of. You know, activating the street frontage, providing inclusivity for everyone and um helping. The the Wellbe community get a revitalized. Um we also are complying with a lot of the um advancing Adams comp plan goals. Um for providing locations for various housing. Um this this building itself is. As you know, right at twenty five and two seventy, so and it's also, you know, right along Washington, so you can just go. Real easy access to Denver, very easy access to all of the surrounding communities for um jobs and access. Um let's see, obviously expanding affordable housing and workforce housing, um middle income housing. And we, I do do believe that we are transitioning from, if you if you remember the the slide that Greg showed. With the Wellbe um future land use map, um we're kind of in the center and. There's industrial that's south of the highway and then in this area of Wellbe, it's mixed use employment. And then the residential uses go a little bit farther, but um in the Wellbe area plan, they specifically say that you make. A co- that yeah, this is an ever changing document. You make accommodations for change and um re- residential does. At this density belong along the residential corridor, so I think it really makes sense for us to con- consider this um rezoning. And consider this building as a as a great catalyst project for the community. Um cultural heritage, again, some of these murals that we're gonna have um on the building will will be reflective of. The history of Wellbe and you know, we've been work, Maker does this quite a bit. We um Peter works with. And and the team work with local artisans to um highlight areas of the building and and create custom. Murals that will speak to the place and provide art and and action and beauty to the to the building. Um the neighbor, the the name of the building is obviously commemorating a space and then there'll be um large murals on the wall of old pictures. Um again, the entry to the schoolhouse will be recreated internally, so it's it's pretty exciting. Um for the five strategic corridors and subareas, again, this is this is just where we are doing what the. Wellbe subarea plan has visioned by with this land use designation and and changing it to align with um that vision. So at the planning uh commissioner hearing, we heard a couple of things. We heard about parking, which again, we were we're not really. Supposed to talk about really, but that said, our parking, we believe is going to fit this um. The uses perfectly. We're we're doing shared, unbundled and managed. We don't don't do paid. You can't do that with uh light tech funded projects. But um the the parking will be shared between the retail uses and the and the residential uses and historically those. Intermingle very well with each other because the people who are using the retail are doing it during the day and then they leave. And the residential people come back at night, so those pair well together. We're also introducing a lot more bicycle parking than is required. Because we want to support um e-bike uses and um and bicycle uses for. What will become of Washington corridor one day um when it gets its bike lane. Um so we have a hundred and two bicycle parking spaces where only nine are required. So this is the map of the the parking worth essentially right there, so Washington corridor is um exempt. And this is supposed to be two maps, unfortunately, um but it won't let me use my animations, so. The the one underneath is the site environmental score that you may hear about from um some of our public comment today. And it it basically shows our site as a an a a purple zone, a dark purple zone. But what that this map does show is that the entire, you know, thousand fi- fifteen hundred foot radius around our site. Is a purple zone, so there's a lot of existing residential and use that is already within this purple zone of of danger. That isn't necessarily dangerous because um I've been talking with Dr. Shelley Miller. She is a recently retired CU air quality professor at CU and she's really helped us um. Strategize on ways that we can um use ERVs and um fans within our units to help indoor air quality. And also provide a purple air monitors, um that what you see right now is a air quality index monitor. Um there is one in Wellbe and this was taken on July first and the air quality was good, but. Um we're thinking about putting one on our um courtyard exterior. So that if the air quality does get bad, this purple air monitor is is hooked up and and we can notify the residents. That maybe they wanna go indoors and not spend so much out time outside time today, um because the indoor air quality will be safer for them. And then lastly, um we heard comments about where the children are gonna play, the, you know, the Chuck did say that this is. One bedrooms and two bedrooms. We're thinking it's young professionals. That said, families can live here. Um that's certainly possible. So there are a lot of residential uses around. On the map of the left, you've seen before, the the residential uses are in blue. And the parks are in green. Um in our elevated courtyard, we do plan on having play equipment onsite. And 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 small like low density site type um product that you see on the right, so we're we're providing. Not necessarily a swing set, but some play areas and then we do think that the residential and the park area around us. Will be suitable for some families that might live in the building. And I think that's it. So um that's all. I'm happy to answer any questions and our whole team is here for that as well.
Okay, thank you so much to the applicant. Um questions from the board for the applicant? Commissioner Malika.
Yeah, and quick question about the parking for the retail. Um so there's, looks like it was six, like twelve dedicated spaces out front, but you said that it ebbs and flows. How does that work during the day for those folks who are trying to access those two businesses?
Uh yes, it's it they won't be reserved. That said, um we imagine that those spaces will. Mostly be used by the retail that is the commercial because the residential uses will want, the residential. Um users will want to be covered. That's gonna be their first preference. And then beyond that, closer to the entry that is along the north.
Okay, um the only reason why I ask is if it were filled in the front and on the side, there's not really anywhere else to park. It's not like you have like a neighborhood next door that you could go and like park in front of yard. It's pretty, you know, built out over there. Um so tho- that was just one of the concerns that I had. Um I appreciate your comment that we don't, we're not supposed to talk about parking, but. I'm just gonna get on a soapbox for a second and say that that's a beautiful statement that comes with a lot of privilege, given the fact that. Having a car literally means you're able to make your rent or not make your rent because you're able to go to work. And I understand that that we're gonna have lots of bike access, which again is fantastic, besides the fact that. If it's snowing or raining, none of us in this room are gonna wanna be on a bike either, so. I mean, I think it's just really important that we think of all of the privileges that we take for granted every day and. You know, make sure that this community and that these residents also are able to have that benefit. And yes, there is a a a bus stop you guys said you're working with RTD to get. Is that getting confirmed with them?
Oh, well, the bus stop is there. It's existing. It's just to the north of us, yeah.
Okay.
But we would like to relocate it onto our site to make it more convenient. So it it exists, it's just on the prop, like literally ten feet north of our property line.
Okay, awesome, okay.
And and if I may, well, if I may just respond to your first.
Sure.
Um I agree and um the the parking ratio for our residential spaces are. Is one point. One point one, so it's one point one spaces per unit.
Okay.
And then we have all of the commercial parking separate and and in that parking count, so I guess what I'm saying is. Our count is pretty good for the type of uses that we're anticipating.
Okay, I appreciate that. Those were the only questions, comments I had right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, thank you. Um I appreciate um all the detail you went into. I was mostly interested, I I really um. Uh I was most interested by adding Dr. Miller to do the air quality analysis. What happens after design? Uh when the op- building is fully occupied and is there some sort of feedback loop? Maybe that's not an architectural question, maybe that's more a management question, but um you know, year two, year five. Um if you have these monitors and there appears to be an issue or an issue develops. Um as traffic patterns change, what would be the outcome and what would management do with the information? On the air quality monitoring that's being set up for the residents and their health and safety?
Good afternoon commissioners. I'm Steve Kuntcher, the Vice President of Real Estate Development for Maker. Um and I think I can take that question as best as I can, so as uh as Aaron mentioned, what we try to do upfront is design. HVAC systems that provide the best air quality, so down the road, our best option if we have decrease in air quality, we have issues. Would be to add some sort of filtration system to that existing system. There'd be capacity there to do that. Um beyond that, I'd have to defer to the engineers on how we could address that otherwise, but the building. Uh will be built in such a way that we can control the air quality indoors. Um you know, uh we'll have some operable windows, but of course, if we can close, if residents close the windows, we can control the air quality.
That makes a ton of sense and I really appreciate the thoughtful approach, given the location. One more question on management. I noticed there is a rec sent rec room. Um clubhouse type room for the residents, um right there near the hot um elevated courtyard. I just, just a curiosity question, that will be available for residents to reserve for birthday parties, retirement parties, uh anniversary parties. As you have at some of your other Maker managed properties. Is that right?
That's correct, yeah. What we aim for is to keep those open during um usable hours, you know, let's say. Six, seven AM till ten PM every day. Um and then close them down at nighttime and then um have them reservable if somebody wants to have a party. And in this case, we'll have two community rooms, so the rooftop one, which will be really great with the views and the outdoor deck that can be reserved. As well as another one on the second floor.
Okay. Great, I think I conflated those two somehow in my head. My last question um is with regard to the parking available, um as was shown with the bike. Um throughways, pathways, there um will likely be bike users on property for recreational. And or commuting purposes. Will you have ample bike storage? Will that be included in your garage? Or how are residents expected, if they're being encouraged to bike due to low parking minimums and proximity, where is safe bike storage?
Architects can speak to that. And I just wanna quickly speak to the parking. Um one other example we have is uh in Westminster. We have a building called Alto, which is where our home office is as well.
Yes.
Uh we have commercial space, residential there as well, and so uh based on that usage, we also are looking at a shared parking usage. So residents leave during the day and uh one of the big things that we really advocated here for was to include that retail parking up front. So residents will most likely gravitate towards the garage and towards the residential entrance to the west. Leaving those spaces open for the retail usage, so I'll let Aaron speak to the bike.
Thank you.
Yes, and we we have a uh quite a few bike parking areas. Uh one largest one is right here at the garage entry. So the the um accessibility to the sidewalk along Washington Street. Is over this crosswalk here and then we have a sep- separate. is over this crosswalk here. And then we have a sep- separate sidewalk that doesn't have to cross any vehicular crossing to the south. So this is locked and secure bike storage.
For residents.
For residents.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Questions for applicant? Okay. Then we're on to public comments. So Jamie, who do we have signed up for public comment?
Norma Frank.
Okay. If you can come on up and state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good day, Commissioners. Norma Frank. I live at seventy four oh one Race Street. And we also have a business in the Welby area, Colorado Lighting, eighteen thirty one. I am happy to be here today. I, well, I've lived in Welby my whole life, but I won't tell you how old I am. But I will share, I'm part of the aging population. And I'm glad to hear there are so many of us. So my grandparents came, immigrated from Italy over a hundred years ago. And they lived on the land that we live on now. So I'm very proud to be there. I also have my, I'm surrounded by my family, so I'm blessed. But as far as the Boyer building goes, you know, it was near and dear to our hearts. My mom went to school there and it was unfortunate what happened. But the Maker Development brought, you know, some hope to us. And it was kind of a shared vision that they shared with our community. And really, we've worked, many of us have been to these charrettes, which would be very exciting for us. And we've worked from the beginning and all the way through these design phases. So they've been wonderful to include us and to understand how we feel about where we live. So the aspect of the Boyer building, like we said, in nineteen twenty seven, it started housing our Welby children up until, you know, the mid fifties, early sixties. They were so gracious to mention our cornerstone. And I mean, for many people, they probably chuckle because these are gems to us. And people think, what? You know, we want to save the brick. And we want to so much preserve the story. And they understand it now after hearing it so much from us. And so it's been a pleasure, you know, to be able to work with them. And my grandfather would be very proud to have his, a part of his cornerstone displayed in the school. The aspect of what it means to our community. I, I was part of, you know, the sub area plan, which is, you know, would, would give me, gave me a lot of battle scars because it was a very personal thing for many people in the area. But what, what we came out with, I thought was a great foundation. And, but really and truly, this application is probably one of the first positive things that are coming out of it. So I'm very excited for it to happen. We'll cheer all the way to the opening date. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak to it. So of course, we support it.
Thank you so much. Jamie?
My name's Vic Frank. I live at seventy four oh one Race Street. Lived in Adams County my whole life. And still live there. We are, my wife and I own CLI Services, which is a very large contracting, electrical contracting company. We have like eighty employees. And we're here to speak in favor of the project. We feel that this would be a good place for our current professional people to have a place to possibly live. And we hope that, you know, recruiting new employees would give us someplace for them to see and have a place to go. So we are here in favor of the project. And I believe you also got something from the school board. I don't know if they got their stuff in in time. But they're also showing favor for all the, the buildings. So that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Jamie?
Carol?
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Laducci. I live at five eighty one East Seventy Sixth Avenue. Three properties north of where this is going to be, hopefully built. It's a pleasure to be here for something encouraging and something that I feel will be a benefit to our community. Just as Norma was saying, the Laducci family bought ten acres of property in nineteen eighteen. And I'm still on that property. So many, many changes, some very sad. Sometimes we've been here for not so pleasant things like crematoriums and trash. And this is very exciting and I'm very hopeful that you would actually approve it because I think it would be such a benefit to our North Washington corridor. So yeah, I'm here in favor of it. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great. Thank you so much for being here. There's nobody else. There's no one else to speak to this case. Is there anyone in the room that would like to come down and speak on the Boyer, I don't have the title in front of me, on this land use hearing? If you can, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello there. I'm Jennifer Connell, seventy two sixty one Washington Street. I think you guys remember my application for a crematory was denied. The county stance was that they were worried about the people in their air, even though these machines didn't come close to emitting the emissions that the coffee roaster next door was emitting. The EPA rates these properties and living conditions, one being the best and a hundred being the worst. And the property you are proposing for affordable housing is rated at ninety nine, one point away from literally being the worst place for people to live. But I noticed that that data that we provided wasn't, at the planning meeting, wasn't put in the packet, but we did resubmit it. There's some questions too that I have about, you know, there's, there's no grocery. Those things have all been brought up, so I'm not going to reiterate that. But I'm also curious as to how this property, how two million dollars was put with COVID relief money to purchase this property? I have questions about the parking. I have press, about the zoning. How was that money secured with federal funds without the zoning being approved for this? I have questions about the commissioner being on the Maker's Housing Board that also voted against my project. You know, we have another plan for the crematory, so right now that's not even, that's okay. That's still going on. That's still happening somewhere else. But there's an ethical responsibility that the county commissioners has when they're approving properties and approving the things that are happening here, how funds are being used. Who's voting against what pro, what projects and where they're doubling down on other things? We followed a lot of the money from some of these projects. We'll get to that at another time. I am, I have questions about how Adams County is navigating these deals. It, it reeks of lack of integrity and fixed deals, the very things that I feel like you guys are supposed to be watching out for in the county. Nobody wants to live between a trash company, a highway, a funeral home and a six lane street. I don't, the bu, the building is beautiful. Nobody's saying that it's not. We all want growth. We all want something cool. We love the coffee shop. We want something neat there. But putting people, the, the jobs that they're talking about, how many people does it take to run a four thousand square foot coffee shop? It's not a, a big job thing. There are going to be children. There are, is going to be risk. And this parking is a joke. You guys know it. I know it. Maker knows it. That's why they tried to purchase the property from us at a low ball rate. They didn't even offer me what I'm paying taxes on for the property. We all know this is a parking fiasco. We can try to do whatever you want with that, but we all know it. You know, I, I, nobody came forward for trestle doors about the air. And it is literally one of the worst chemical, forever chemical emitting places we have in the county. And I went back and I searched through all the people that made this about air and it wasn't. So I have some questions about all of that.
Thank you so much. You're at time. You can please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Tony Connell and I'm a partner at seventy two sixty one Washington Street. I think as far as the Welby plan and the, I think the Welby and the county has waited so long to institute the Welby plan, that they're about to take, anything will happen. The Welby plan, I looked back and you look at that, it's a three story retail in the base, commercial on the top, on the second floor and residential on the third. This particular one has less than five percent of the project is commercial. The rest is retail. I mean, residential. That's not it. It's not going to activate. And be economic sustainability and really get the, you know, that street activity. That's just not what, you know, and it's not going to create the employment activity that, that, you know, the old town street thing. What I, I think should be done is take the two point two five million that was given and put out an RFP for all of Welby. There's going to be a better location that pops up that people can do this and also the adjacent properties beside it could also invigorate and be the catalyst that you're all talking about. This catalyst is pigeonholed. It's not good. So those are the main, and, and, and I have experience in affordable housing. I have experience right now where our families re, doing a gravel pit. And we're doing a thousand or a million feet of commercial and seven hundred and sixty five square units, I'm sorry, units of housing. And the retailers are, and the commercial operators are the ones who dictate parking. You can have state things, but they're the ones that require and won't buy and won't lease unless they have a certain amount of parking. And so this, you're, you're lucky, you have Boyers, but are they sustainable there? Will they be successful? The first time, most people drive into a place, if they don't get parking, they're not going there again. And so I, there, we can do this historic retro revival and keep the cornerstone and do all that with a better commercial pro, project. An employment base incubator, that property can be done, something else. And then go someplace else and make the vision of Welby actually happen, rather than pigeonhole and call success and then it never happens again. Thank you very much. Oh, my one question is Maker has a hundred and eighty two million, one hundred dollars, according to their two thousand twenty three of equity. They've done well in the five years from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty three, where they increased their equity a hundred and ten million. They should have some equity that they don't have to rely on grants. They could create the, the vision of commercial, of retail, commercial and active residential themselves with some of their own money.
Okay. Thank you so much. Jamie, did you have anyone else? You didn't have anyone. Was there anyone else in the room? I think mostly is staff and applicant and public. Okay. With that, the next item on our agenda, I didn't see anything there for the applicant response. It's to the Commissioners for Discussion. And I normally don't kick us off, but I normally wrap us up. I am going to kick us off this time. So my family, thank you. First of all, I want to thank all of you, staff and public included, the applicant, those that came and spoke, residents and business. It's been a long morning for everyone. We've been here for many hours, four hours almost. So I really appreciate you being here and providing your comments. It does help us make a decision. So I want to start, and I'll start with my own story. And my own story is, is that my family grew up in the Welby area. My grandfather was a farmer just outside Welby, just to the north. My folks were married at Assumption Catholic Church there in the Welby neighborhood. We were just there yesterday, my mom and I, we took a ride from Brighton down to Pisono Sausage. We picked up dinner and we made it back to Brighton. That neighborhood means a lot to me as a county commissioner. And I was absolutely heartbroken, even though I'd been there only a handful of times, is when Boyers burned down. Absolutely heartbroken. It was in twenty twenty. It was, you know, quiet overall as far as traffic is concerned. It was a blue sky. And you can see the dark cloud for miles and miles and miles. And it was just heart wrenching. And I am excited for this project. I am excited for an occup, for that property to be occupied. We did take a tour of it. We have looked at, as a board of county commissioners, an incubator space for business. We looked at it as a potential Stanley Marketplace for retail, for art, for egg, for these pop up, you know, these food courts, if you want to call them that, that you see at Stanley Marketplace. There's one down also near Sloane's Lake. The thing there is that it does take private investment. And we did talk to developers and private investment. And it was not a venture that they were willing to take. And I, as an elected official, don't have that power to make people do anything, let alone a private capitalist, a private developer to make them or force them to do any type of development there. So I understand the air quality. We lived it. Still live it. We still have residents along I twenty five, along I thirty six. Our four founders, you know, founding fathers here at Adams County may have not made the best decisions. But this board of county commissioners is dedicated to making the best decisions going forward. And when it comes to air quality, yeah, we have Suncor in our backyard. And I'm sure at the time that was ever built. It was old when I was growing up and that's been more than fifty years ago. I mean, that, that refinery was old. I question their air quality. I question their operation. But this board is here to make the best path forward for our residents. We're here to address housing needs. We're here to help small business. We're here to build affordable housing. And what I said in my previous land use hearing, what I said last week is that when we can't reg, we, we want people to be good neighbors and we want them to mitigate the problems. And I think that that's what Maker Housing is doing here on the air quality, to have a doctor, a former CU air quality specialist come on staff, mitigate the challenges, to build capacity if filters are needed, to go through that process, which is not required by Adams County to go through, to take that on in order to find housing for residents, to help a small business. I am in support of this project. I did write down a number of things. I think in general, again, the county is addressing it through some policy. Also, we ran a state bill regarding, I can't remember the name, it's the CRA, County Revitalization, County Revitalization Act. I hope that that does help with grocery stores. I hope that that does help spur economic development in Welby and other portions of unincorporated Adams. As far as the COVID relief dollars, I do take offense to the actions perceived by the public of what this board has done. We were in a position to help many hundreds of thousands of residents. The direction that we gave to staff is look at these five or six areas of emphasis. Please look at medical care for our kids and families. Please look at food insecurity. Please look at rental and housing and affordable housing. Please look at how do you help small business? Please look at how do you help schools? How do you help our hospitals? The board had no direct hand in how those awards were made. We were the ultimate decider after proposals were submitted. So a competitive RFP process has been taken. If you are seeing redundancy in areas, that was intentional. That was to make, build a network of medical providers, to build a network of addressing food insecurity in Adams County. There is no funny business going on here and I do take offense to that. And moving on. moving on. So questions about parking, we are regulated by the state. They passed a parking, minimum parking, whatever, how we want to interpret that. Um, I think with business and uh residential on that property, um, Boyers was beautiful. It was beautiful and coffee houses. You know what coffee houses do? They bring people together. And that's what we want. And I hope that every parking space is full. Um, is it a challenge that there's no on-street parking on Washington? Where does overflow parking go? Um, people who get creative, I fear impacts around that, but I'm going to go with I'm still supporting this because I think we want success. We want people housed, or at least I will speak for myself that I want people housed. Um, it was mentioned that a commissioner is on the Maker Housing Board. Commissioners are on many boards. This is a quasi judicial board that we do sit on and that we do have representation on. Um, the board that we do not, that is also quasi to Adams County. Um, this board elected not to have a representation on is the health board. Um, but as far as a commissioner being on, that person only has one vote on this board. That person has one voice at the Maker Housing Board. Um, it is in the bylaws. It's something that's been there and it's been addressed. Um, couple of other items I wrote down. Um, regarding jobs at the coffee shop, there are no jobs there now. That land's been vacant. Um, if it's three jobs, if it's two jobs, if it's fifteen jobs, um I support it. I support that whether it is maker with a retail, whether it's retail, commercial which we already looked at and that failed miserably. No one, there was of no interest for someone to come in and do that. Um, again, I just want to uh thank this, thank the staff, thank the people that spoke this morning. Um, the residents, I appreciate your support for this project and your comments. Um, and also business owners. I did catch that as well. So I just want to thank you and I will be supporting this item today. Other commissioners. Emma Pinter, I have you up again?
Yes, and then I, I believe Commissioner Odorizio is right after me. Um, just as a aid to my colleague, uh Chairbaka, who just spoke, the parking requirements come directly to us from Colorado House Bill twenty four dash thirteen oh four, which was passed by the legislature that does actually uh reading from the packet, the full packet, page six, Colorado House Bill twenty four dash thirteen oh four, which precludes local governments from import enforcing parking standards uh for qualifying developments within transit oriented development. And that's this one, which means that the state is governing the parking capacity. We don't have an option of complying or not complying. This bill passed in twenty twenty four, hence the House Bill twenty four dash thirteen oh four. Um, it is really helpful to have um such a detailed plan that addresses so many needs. Um, as Chairbaka said, uh, we all watched and were heartbroken when boyers um burned. Uh, you know, it, a coffee shop is the couple dozen jobs that will be represented there. But it is also one of those third spaces that allow people to gather. And I took many a meeting um at the Boyers Coffee Shop because it was at the intersection of so many different people's paths and lives. And I saw, you know, real estate agents and, you know, small business owners and people interviewing for jobs and doing all kinds of networking and community support as well as just a members of the community finding a moment of respite. And those third spaces are rare and they are valuable because they allow for moments of community connection. And Boyers was that for our community and I think uh the minute it is open, not only will we have a great grand opening celebration, but I think it'll be back and busy and bustling again with the tight parking that it used to have, hopefully expanded through this shared parking. It's not a formal district, but shared parking model of daytime uses and night uses, um similar to what goes on in Alto near that train station. I also did note, as was mentioned in public comment, the letter of support from Appleton Public Schools, which was pretty expansive and their reasons why. This is incredibly helpful. Um, the housing is such a high need for community. There isn't a type of community serving, a demographic we do. Seniors, young people, workforce, uh that doesn't include concerns about access to housing, different types of housing. Basically, every rung on the housing ladder is of need and Maker has um a long history of serving Adams County's goals and the municipal's goals in achieving um accessible, affordable housing distributed across our community. I will also be supporting this project. Uh, for many of the reasons I mentioned and the, the reasons my colleagues have mentioned as well. And I look forward to seeing not just uh the Boyers space fill, but the other retail spaces as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Odorizio?
Yeah, um, I'll be supporting this project and looking at the parking issues, I think that I'm a little frustrated with the state on how they've handled it, but I will give it to uh Maker that they are going above and beyond. Uh, because I believe that what I'm seeing here is they can actually probably get away with a little less parking, but they're committing to doing it. Uh, the level of parking that they're doing, including garages, which are extremely expensive and difficult to better utilize um and more efficiently use the square footage of the, of the parcel. And I think that that shows um a wise investment. They did it on seventy seventy at seventy first and federal, and that's proven to be a uh very positive um investment. Uh, and also it's, it is enabling. So I agree with the general concerns expressed by Commissioner Mulca that it is frustrating. Parking is important, but I do see here with a hundred and forty eight spaces compared to what they could uh maybe get away with not doing. I think this is the right move. It also uh, well, I believe will also generate more of the mixed commercial use fill that we're trying to very consistently, not inconsistently, very consistently try to promote along these big uh corridors. Corridors where some level of transit, although we're always going to push for more, uh already exists, Washington, Federal, Sheridan. These are uh pay ghosts. These are extremely important corridors for the development of our community and they already have some of these amenities in place. Um, and uh while I also have concerns about the food deserts in the community, it's, it's the rooftops and it's the families that bring that type of development. And we can't start with nothing and expect that to come first. It always starts with the people. As far as the Welby Plan, I've been intimately following it and participating since it was created. But I will say that um over the time, the industrial piece has been dominant. Coming in, in support of the Welby Plan, commercial has just been a recent comer and you're starting to see some really neat commercial development uh along the corridors of York and Washington, uh lots of investment there. And now the late comer has been residential. And we're starting to finally see the residential, which was always part of the contemplated uh in the plan to bring more families uh into Welby for the residential piece. And I think that um when I also look at the residential next to highways, I mean, if you go down by Elitches and the Central Valley, I mean, you see it happening. People will know what they're moving into. And I do believe that as we continue to work towards air quality, it's not just about who lives within a hundred feet of those highways. It's about overall collective effort for us to continue to invest in environmental protections and improving both the climate as well as pollution uh based problems that we have in our environment. Uh, I'm appreciative of the bike storage and the thoughtful approach there. Everything from the dog park all the way to the outdoor spaces, the the warm area, the cold area. I like that. I think that's, that's smart. Um, and uh as far as the jobs, there's also going to be jobs for property management, property maintenance and things like that. So when you have this type of um catalytic, meaning a catalyst in the community going in, I think it could help uh inspire some other investments in development. Finally, I, I just want to thank the neighbors because we are desperately as a community and as a nation trying to move from NIMBY to YIMBY. And it's actually reassuring when I, when we are starting to get uh neighbors uh who maybe with very little like, uh, they may use the coffee shop, but I don't think any of the people that testified there are going to be actually living here. But this is the move towards YIMBY. What do you want? Yes, in my backyard, not just no in my backyard. And we're I, I think if we as a county can continue to ask communities and neighbors, what is it that you want? And then we actively and proactively go out and do our economic development to find those amenities and find those things. I think we're going to be uh doing a service to our community in a better way than the whack a mole of NIMBY. Not this. Okay, not this, not this. So that's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mulca then, Henson.
All right. I'll be brief since so much has already been said on this. It's not a surprise. I'm not happy about the parking either, but I, as many have already said, that's a state issue um that we cannot get around. So um overall, this project meets and fills many gaps already in our community, which is why I will be supporting it today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Yes, I am happy to support this today for many of the reasons that have already been stated. Change is always hard and this change was brought about by, unfortunately by a fire at the Boyers uh coffee roastery and bringing, bringing some fear and uncertainty about what was going to happen in the, in this, in this area. And I think where we've landed um is really, is really fantastic. Uh, retail does follow rooftops. So we need people in these areas. We have a housing shortage in Colorado. We need to think creatively about where we can tuck people in. Right across the street, across Washington are numerous restaurants and the Pizzano Sausage Shops and place, already some other places to gather. Mr. Egg, the Boyers Coffee Shop, it's going to be there. This is the perfect to me, this is one of the most perfect blends of, of taking what was there, honoring it, loving it and moving into the future and saying, this is who we are now and this is who we can be in the future. We're part of Welby. We've got people living in Welby already. We're going to add people to Welby. It's going to help the businesses that are there. It's going to help us create the data, uh, you know, drive the numbers. We need to get more transit there. This is how we build community and air quality is a concern on, I think, in every inch of this state. And it's something, and I think that great measures have been taken to, to uh, to measure that. And uh parking, I think parking needs um in transit oriented neighborhoods like this and developments are going to help us rethink about how we go from place to place. And if, and this is and while we may think it's not enough and it may prove to be snug, we don't know. But we also don't know what the next thing is coming, that is coming to Welby is going to bring and how it's going to complement this. And so I think that uh this is an exciting time. I think everybody who came in today to speak and I'm happy to support this project and I look forward to it being built and I can't wait for the ribbon cutting.
Great. So just one final comment um to the Maker Housing Group. Thank you for listening to community and to the neighbors and incorporating um art and beauty and murals and recreating the schoolhouse entrance. That's iconic in Adams County for that corridor. Um, the cornerstone as well. There's a lot of history. There's a lot of pride um in the Welby area. And so thank you for incorporating that. That does align very closely with the vision um of those neighbors. And that's who I'm concerned with is the neighbors that are there, is to bring them beauty, to bring them something other than a vacant lot and a really hard memory of seeing that coffee shop burn down and to welcome new neighbors in their, in their neighborhood. So with that, uh motion from commissioners.
Make a motion to approve the Maker Boyers rezoning and preliminary development plan, PRC twenty four dash seventeen.
And I will second that. And the motion passes five to zero. So with no additional items on our agenda, today we are adjourned at one twenty five PM.